Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on April 11th, 2024. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 22nd day of March, 2024. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Friday, January 12th, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment when the time comes, wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter? Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
And Paul Levy just arrived.
Ah, and Miss. Thank you.
Um, Carrie, you said that Mr. Taylor would be joining us by phone. Is he not in the attendee? Was he not?
Yes, I just, whoever that iPhone person is declined my invitation. So I'm writing him now, asking if that was him, and I haven't heard back.
Okay.
So I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, announcements, any announcements from staff or board members? Uh, Justin, do you?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, and good evening, Board, Board members and members of the public. Just one quick announcement, you might have seen in some of the newspapers recently, discussion about the Landwin Herrentown property that this board has seen over the past four, couple of years. That application, and you might have seen in the context of the municipality, the council passing a resolution to fund the purchase of that for open space. As of now, we have not had that application formally withdrawn, and I don't believe the municipality is formally the owner yet, kind of negating the application. Uh, so we don't have a date for that, as we were still waiting for things. I'll advise the board if anything changes, but in some ways, it's still kind of an active application before the board.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other? Any other announcements? I'm pretty sure we do not have any subcommittee reports tonight, is that correct? That's correct. Okay, Justin's nodding his head. Um, so let's look at minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from December 6th. It was a special meeting. Uh, any comments or suggested edits for those minutes, and if not, would someone like to move them?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan, moved by Alvin McGowan, seconded by Mr. Cohen, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen was not present at the 6th.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Also, I would note that I wasn't present on the 14th.
And Ms. Capizoli, you were not present. I have Mr. Bodikheimer. Sorry, I have them wrong. I'm sorry, I have them in front of me.
So who's eligible to vote on the December 6th minutes?
Uh, that would be Mr. McGowan, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Quinn, oh, he's not over here, Mr. Bodikheimer, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay. Mr. Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Or, okay, thank you. And for the December 14th minutes, that was a regular meeting. Um, can you tell us, Carrie, who is?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen, Mr. O'Donnell, Ms. Sacks, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you. Any, um, questions? Uh, or suggestions for those minutes, seeing none with someone who's eligible to vote, like to move them? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um, next up, we have, excuse me, an application from uh, Maraquinho and Marlin Ayewdely. This is continued from March 21st, 2024. This is a minor subdivision and site plan with variances at 469 Ewing Street, Block 7202, Lot 13. And this is file number P2322-255MS/PM. Uh, Mr. Mueller, you're on mute?
Before we get started, David and Owen, we're not at the last meeting. Have you either read a transcript or listened to the tape?
Yes.
You have, okay, and you've certified?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and Owen, what about you?
Yes, I've also submitted the certification.
Okay, so you're both eligible to vote.
I should have confirmed that, yes, Jerry.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Lesko, for some reason, I'm, oh, there you are. Moved around, moved to a different location on my screen. Um, just a quick setting the table for us, I think, would be helpful, and Mr. Mueller, uh, any comments that you have after Justin speaks?
Yeah.
Um, specific to the um, the, the things for this board to keep in mind as we proceed with an application with, with multiple variances, I think it's important for us to sort of get um, uh, reminded slash schooled uh, before, before we commence. So go ahead, Justin, and then Jerry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Jerry, I'm not sure if you swore me in last time.
Oh, okay, um, if you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
You swear affirm testimony about to give the truth.
Yes, I did.
So I sworn affirm, I believe I did, but, uh, in any event.
Can't hurt to do it twice.
Yep.
Uh, I'm going to share my screen, Madam Chair, um, just to orient us to the site. And what I'm showing in a second, what I'm showing now, uh, is uh, the publicly available NJ Parcel Explorer created by Rowan University. The subject parcel is Block 7202, Lot 13, highlighted in blue here. It fronts Ewing Street with Turhune Road not too far to the south and North Harrison Street not too far to the east. Uh, and you could see the Princeton Shopping Center, of course, uh, uh, kind of catty corner, uh, off to the side here. Um, the adjacent properties on all sides are residential and in the R6 zone of the former township, as is the subject parcel. Um, but neither the lots nor the houses on them are uniform as you look around. Uh, just within the block of the subject parcel, you'll see lots ranging from about, uh, two tenths of an acre uh, to just about, just above four tenths of an acre, uh, as well. The houses on the same side of Ewing as the subject parcel are generally smaller and close to the street, uh, whereas the ones across, uh, have deeper setbacks and are larger in size with some newer construction. Many of the homes in the neighborhood have not been redeveloped from their original post-war construction, uh, though several in the area appear to have, appear to have been torn down and rebuilt in recent years, uh, including some to the north, uh, and to the west of the subject parcel. Um, 469 Ewing Street is among one of the larger lots at point four four acres, and it currently includes a two-story, 3,200 square foot residential dwelling, uh, which dates back to 1947 and includes an additional unit that predates the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, but was never formally approved as one. Uh, the homes on the two adjacent parcels on each side, uh, to both the north and the south of this property range from about 880 square feet to 1770 square feet. And the subject property is not within any locally designated historic district. It was classified as minor by the site plan committee in early March. Uh, so moving on to the application itself, um, I'm going to switch to, and hopefully you could see it. Uh, and I see Councilman Cohen has his hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, Justin, but just in terms of the existing accessory unit that's on the site, when you say that it's not consistent with the current ordinance, there was a flat ordinance in the former township prior to the current ADU ordinance. Are you also saying that it was not conforming to that ordinance and it ever was recorded as, uh, a unit either before or after the passage of the ADU, uh, ordinance?
Uh, I don't have that information, uh, off the top of my head. Hopefully, the applicant can shed some light on that, uh, after the introduction.
Okay.
Thanks, good question.
And Justin, let's, let's mark, uh, your first area view is Exhibit A1. I'm sorry, Exhibit PB1. And what we're showing now?
Okay, and I see Mr. Bridger has his hand up probably to answer Councilman Cohen's question.
Hey, Derek.
Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. Um, yes, there was a flat in that existing house, but it was never approved. No application was filed. An application was filed, uh, last year to, uh, approve it to make the changes consistent with the current ordinance, but I don't think, believe it was ever acted upon.
Okay, thank you. Derek, did I swear when the last time? I thought I did.
I believe you did. I'm happy to swear again. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so moving on to the application itself, I've switched to the applicant's grading and tree protection plan from within their civi-, uh, civil engineering plan set. This is sheet number three. And as Jerry said, this will be PB2. Um, Ewing Street is to the right of your screen here, which means Turhune will be on the top, so this is kind of flipped from what I just showed. Uh, north is at the bottom of the screen. Uh, the applicant proposes subdividing the current one lot into 2.22 acre lots to then build one accessory dwelling unit in the front of each lot, one single-family home in the middle of each lot, and a garage in the rear of each lot. All of the properties front a proposed shared driveway, which shows six parking spaces. Uh, one in front of each dwelling, as well as one each in the garage. Uh, excuse me, and rain gardens would be located in the front towards Ewing Street. Uh, many of the existing trees on the site would be removed either because of the site plan or because of construction damage. Uh, and the municipal landscape architect and municipal arborist have written memos about the trees and rain gardens, and I'll defer to them, uh, later on. Um, this application, or this applicant came before the board for a concept review in December, uh, 2021, showing this general concept, uh, though not nearly this level of detail, um, including, you know, the, the trees to be removed or the number of variances, which is, you know, understood at a concept review. Um, and we certainly appreciate them for taking the time, uh, to come for a concept review. Um, but just a reminder for everyone that concept reviews and the comments from individuals there, both from the board and the applicant, are not binding. Uh, at that concept review, the term cottage court was used in reference to this type of development. Um, while that might be the inspiration for this development, this is not truly a cottage court, uh, which is a multifamily development type consisting of identical or nearly identical cottages, fronting a shared green or pedestrian space, uh, and often developed on one lot with off-street parking spaces at the perimeter of the lot, if they exist at all. Um, this development, uh, or this proposal does not meet the definition of cottage court as it contains buildings uh, with different areas, heights, sizes, um, and utilizes the ADU ordinance. Um, the dwellings front on a driveway, and it does not contain pedestrian pathways or a shared courtyard, uh, and the parking spaces are located within the center of the two lots. Um, so that being said, um, I would advise the board to consider this application as a subdivision application from one lot to two lots with two houses, two ADUs, and two garages around a shared driveway, not as a cottage court. Um, going into the proposed buildings, each of the two-story ADUs is 790 square, uh, 796 square feet in area of the 800 square foot maximum, and each includes two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Uh, each three-story primary dwelling is 35 feet in height and includes four bedrooms and three bathrooms plus a basement for a total of, uh, 1,882 square feet in floor area. Uh, and the garages in the rear are essentially one structure subdivided down the middle with the proposed lot line uh, and slope from about 12 feet in height in the front to a little over 10 feet, uh, in the rear. Uh, so originally, 18 variances were identified, uh, with this application as most are duplicated on each of the lots. Um, since the March 21st meeting of the board, uh, revised architectural plans have been submitted, which remove, uh, five variance requests related to the sidewall fenestration of three of the structures, so, uh, uh, the distance of blank walls, uh, and one variance related to the height of one of the structures was also removed. Uh, 12 variance requests still remain. Six of them are related to the subdivision of land, and those include two for lot area where a quarter acre is required, and the two new lots would be, uh, just under at point two two acres each, or about 12% smaller than the requirement. Um, two variances for lot, lot width where 85 feet is required and 61.5 feet is provided, uh, and two for lot frontage where 85 feet is required and about 67 feet, uh, is provided on each lot. Uh, the remaining six variances pertain to the structures, um, and really, uh, relate to the accessory dwelling units being in front of the primary structures, uh, as is not envisioned by the municipal, uh, ADU ordinance. Uh, two of those relate to the entrances of each ADU towards the street, uh, where they are not permitted to face, uh, a street. Um, then two of them are for the entrances of the primary dwellings, which do not face the street because they face the back of the ADU. And then two of the variances are, are for, uh, the ADUs being in the front yard, uh, of each parcel. Uh, additionally, the application uses the proportional, uh, floor area ratio of 28% rather than the 25% allowed by the zoning for a conforming lot. Um, in somewhat simple terms, floor area ratio, or FAR, as it'll probably be referred, uh, to the rest of the meeting, uh, is the number you get when you divide the amount of area on all floors in the structures, uh, the living space essentially, on a lot over the total area of the lot. Um, proportional FAR under our municipal ordinance is intended to benefit non-conforming structures or conforming structures on a non-conforming lot. So it did not seem appropriate to use it, uh, when creating two non-conforming lots with new non-conforming structures. Um, and each lot shows about 27.9% floor area ratio, or 28% is that proportional FAR maximum. Um, I also have some minor comments about circulation, trees, sidewalks, and other things that I can address after the applicant's presentation. Uh, but to, to generally summarize and close out this introduction, uh, the board should consider this application as a subdivision of one lot into two lots with two new primary dwellings, two new ADUs, and two new garages proposed around a shared driveway. Uh, the applicant should prove the positive reasons of how the variances outweigh their detriments, and the proposal is better for the community, uh, than the zoning requirements. Uh, they should also address the negative proofs of how the proposal would not create detriment to the public good, the master plan and the zoning ordinance. Uh, and within that, the applicant should demonstrate why the 12 remaining variances are needed while at the same time, most of the zoning standards, uh, are essentially maxed out. Um, the Princeton Master Plan mentions increasing housing supply and diversity of housing types, and to welcome new growth in areas specifically like this one near the shopping center, uh, though it also mentions balancing that with maintaining the quality of life and fabric of Princeton's existing neighborhoods. Um, the term missing middle housing is, of course, mentioned in the master plan, uh, though I'm not convinced the structures, particularly four-bedroom, three-bathroom, uh, houses meet that definition, uh, again, when they're right at the maximum of what the zoning allows. That being said, if the board finds, uh, through the applicant's testimony that the positive reasons outweigh the negative ones, uh, the board should also consider what sort of conditions might be used to mitigate the impact of the new structures. Uh, and these could include conditions on floor area ratio, heights of the buildings, additional screenings, or enhanced setbacks. Uh, Mr. Weissman and Mr. Bridger are here. Uh, Mr. Dobremilsky is here, and they've all, uh, I, I believe he's here already. Um, they've all submitted reports and, and are happy to, I'm sure, answer questions. Um, and that's all I have for now, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, I saw David's hand go up first and then Nat Bodikheimer. So before we go to Mr. Mueller, David?
Um, I have two questions, uh, one maybe better for the applicant, but why do the plans appear to have the measles?
Oh. That, you know, I'm happy you brought that up. These are notes from the program that this was drawn in. Um, I have, I, I downloaded a new Adobe Acrobat, and it shows those on the PDF, so, um, hopefully the applicant can show these without the measles.
I hope so.
But yeah, that's a new, uh, I might have to delete this program.
Unfortunately, they show up on my Acrobat as well, so it's not just you. I mean, when I, so anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the second.
Whether it's a feature or a bug.
It's a bug.
Go ahead.
Um, the second question is, uh, more substantive. It's for Mr. Weissman. Um, and I think I understand that this is not a major or a large project as relates to stormwater based on our definition of 5,000 square feet of new impervious cover. But the question I have is how close we are to to that definition? Cause I know there are some comments about car circulation that might trigger more impervious coverage, and, um, so, so I just want to know, are they comfortably below the standard for a large? Uh, a large project?
Dan Weissman, I, I think you were sworn in last time, but maybe we should.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe not. Okay, go ahead, Jerry. Dan, if you could raise your right hand. Dan Dobremilsky, you, you here as well? No? Okay.
Jerry, there was one night, he said he was going to be about 20 minutes late because he has another meeting. I, I think that might have been tonight.
Uh, Dan, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm a testimony about to give the truth.
I do.
So sworn affirm.
Thank you. Um, the applicant has indicated on their plans, uh, and in Steph's analysis, they would agree, uh, the net change in impervious, uh, currently is 2,885 square feet. Uh, so there is a buffer of about 2,100 square feet for additional impervious.
Thanks.
Uh, Nat Bodikheimer?
Uh, thanks, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, I had also just wanted to, to, to throw into the mix, uh, Justin, you, you, you referred to a number of the, the tests that the, you know, were part of the consideration of the variances. I also wanted to just, eh, eh, when you were giving your introduction, you sort of think alluded to what my question was about, which is, has to do with lot size in the area. I mean, you were describing the lot sizes in the, in the, uh, in the neighborhood, but I'm, I'm just curious how, um, when we apply a test of whether the subdivided lots are consistent with the lot patterns in the neighborhood, how we are supposed to assess that? How far do we go from the subject properties when we're testing that? How, how do we test it? I mean, is it like, what's, what's the nature of the test when we compare uh, to surrounding properties? Cause I, I, I imagine that's part of what we should be considering as well, even though I didn't hear you uh, mention it specifically.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jerry, do you have a legal answer on that, or do you want me to give my planning understanding?
You start with your planning understanding.
Sure, I, I don't think there are any rules of thumb on that. Um, I think it's really up to the applicant to prove the positive and the negative criteria, you know, to the extent that the board is comfortable with and that is allowed by the municipal land use law. Um, and I think just based on, you know, both that argument and any mitigation that, you know, the board decides is needed to, to kind of fulfill that, um, variances could be granted, but it, it's not a, you know, I, I don't think there's a, a specific foot limit or, or number of units or anything like that, um, to.
So I can, I, I can easily imagine the applicant making an argument, not being persuaded by it, but, I mean, I would, we, we, we should be asking our counsel for guidance as to whether the argument that's being made by the applicants is compliant with standards that have been put in place around the state or in other situations, right? Is that, is that a reasonable thing we should be doing?
May I jump in with my understanding, and Jerry, if it's wrong, please correct me, because I want to make sure about this, too. My understanding is that it is the applicant's responsibility, the, the entire burden of proof for, um, requesting any kind of variance lies with the applicant only. And, you know, through expert witnesses, and if they're planning expert, if you find that person, if any, any board member finds, um, that testimony to be unpersuasive, um, then and it affects the way you vote, then you need to say so when you vote. That, that is my understanding, that the burden of proof, uh, positive and negative always lies entirely with the applicant and, um, and whether or not, you know, we buy it a, as individuals is, is up to us. Is that, I mean, is that, is that a fair summary, Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you very much.
So now, we, we really haven't heard what their theory of the case is, as to why they're entitled to the, um, uh, to the subsidy into the variances and.
Right, that's yet to, that's yet to be put on the table by Mr. Kennedy and, and his witnesses. Is there any, anything, Mr. Mueller, that you want to talk about on the front end about what specifically will be asked to decide? Um, whether an application with lots of variances, um, you know, is, raises things that the board should be thinking about as we hear testimony. We already covered the burden of proof question.
Yeah, well, certainly, one of the main points i- is simply what comes out of the decision by Joe Jalawi in the Humbert Street, uh, case, where he said, you know, particularly because there are a lot of variances, uh, involved there, and he said, you've gotten into the realm of legislating. This is beyond simply making adjustments to the zoning ordinance. Um, you're now legislating, and it is not the function of the planning board. It's the function of the governing body. And he struck it down basically for that reason. So we want to be careful here because there is a substantial number of variances, uh, that have been requested. Um, there's an e- separate issue of the support have the option of simply granting the, the subdivision, which cuts through the, the house, conditioned upon the demolition of the house, and leaving for later uh, the question of the variances, and then even if does, and if, and if it does leave it for later, that very well would, you should go to the zoning board, I would think. Um, and partly, the decision in that regard, and I think the board has some real discretion here, is with the variances, granting the variances and accomplishing the development that they want necessary for the subdivision itself. So those are two things I think the board needs to be thinking about in addition to the other points that have been discussed.
Okay. Um, any other questions from board members before we turn to?
And could I, could I ask you, uh, Justin, if he wants to jump in on any of that?
Uh, no, not at this time. I'd love to hear from the applicant.
Yeah.
May I ask, Jerry, could you just repeat that thesis? I want to be sure I get it. The last statement you made.
Yeah, it's, I think the board has a lot of discretion in deciding whether to even hear the variances or just simply granting the subdivision, conditioned upon the demolition of the house, and they have to do that because the house, because the subdivision line cuts through the, uh, the house, and deferring the decision on the, uh, on the variances with the judgment that if the board decides it doesn't really need to grant the variances and therefore permit the sub, permit the development as proposed to grant the subdivision. And at that point, it could, it would defer the, the decision on the, um, To grant the subdivision and at that point it could, it would defer the, the decision on the, um, on the variances. And since it's a site plan, this would go to the, uh, but it's only two lots, it would go to the zoning board.
So I don't want to, I don't want to prejudice board members, if that's not too strong a word, um, uh, um. Uh, ahead of, you know, hearing testimony, but I appreciate your laying out that. That consideration and that potential choice, not potential choice, that actual choice, uh, that we may have, uh, later on tonight. Uh, Ms. Perlmutter and then Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yeah, I just have a question, uh, putting aside the question, um. That, uh, Mr. Muller just, the aspect Mr. Muller just discussed. I have a question for Justin and that is on this proportional. FAR, I don't fully understa- could you clarify that a little bit more and say, but what is the alternative to a proportional FAR?
Sure, so there's a section, so with your traditional zoning, there's a floor area ratio, uh, requirement. Um, in this case, it's 25%. There's a section under our zoning code, uh, that allows for, uh. Higher than what's allowed under the zoning through this truly mathematical equation. Um, and it's intended for, uh, non-complying lots that exist or non-conforming structures that exist. Um, so basically if something predated zoning, uh, you know, you had a lot that was smaller and. Uh, y- you would need a higher percentage of that smaller lot to build a house. Uh, it's in place. You know, generally for that. Um, my comment was more towards creating non-complying lots. Uh, it doesn't necessarily, uh, you know, seem like that's the intention of it.
And we, we in fact, um, a- adopted a condition in the prior, uh, approval. That said, the proportional FAR cannot be used. I think that was for the Lafayette Court, uh, approval.
I think we've done it a couple, a couple of times, Jerry.
Okay.
Basically, we've regularly, um, not granted. The proportional FAR when the non-conformity was being created by the subdivision before the board, so.
Thank you, David.
And, and that part of the ordinance dates back to, I believe, 1988, so it's not like it's a, a new thing necessarily.
Mm-hmm, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Nat Bodikheimer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, i- i- it would seem to me that. If we are going to be presented with the, the possibility of a subdivision conditioned on the demolition of the, of, of, of the existing home. That. Uh, we would have a different set of arguments about the benefits of that. Compared to an argument about variances that would assume the new development and so that. We could not consider the benefits of any prospective. Uh, development along the lines of what we've been shown. As part of the argument for the subdivision, the subdivision, the. Would the subdivision have to stand on its own? Because you, uh, you'd still need a variance for the lot size, would you not?
Yes, well, six varies.
Two, so there's two, so there's two totally different sets of arguments for, uh, pros and cons that the applicant would have to satisfy.
Yes, exactly.
And we could not consider the one basket when dealing with the other basket.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy, welcome back.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
I, I, I hope that at least some of the conversation was helpful to hear on the front end. Uh, it was important for us. Um, I will, uh, turn things over to you.
Thank you so much. And first, before I start again, um, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the board, Madam Chair, and, and your esteemed professionals. Uh, my name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee here again for, uh, the homeowner applicants. We do have one. Other person, um, if they haven't been moved over yet, but, uh, the, the homeowner himself will get some testimony from, from him, Jimmy, uh. At the end is, is, is in the attendee room, if we could move him over, um, uh, uh, before we, we start, but. Uh, there we, we go. Thank you so much.
Um, Justin, uh, I'm sorry, Ryan, do you have any, uh, experts that you?
Well, we do, then they're all, but they're all in the room. Thankfully, they, they got their panelist links, so we have them there. Um, we've got, um, we'll hear from our engineer and planner. Uh, Jim Kamelak and our architect, um, Marina Rubina this evening and, and. I know we got very far in discussion last time, but I, I don't know that we actually swore them in.
Yeah.
So if, if you'd like to start there, um.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we can do that and I'll, I'll, um, do my intro after we've, we're all sworn in.
That's great. Why don't, why don't we, why don't we do that? Um, if, uh, those people like the Ryan just, uh, re- referred to can, uh. Raise their hands?
They're raised, go ahead.
Okay, because as you know, on my screen, they, and they don't come on until somebody says something. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
I do.
Okay, um, so it's one or firm, please say your full name and spell your last name.
James, James Kamelak, C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K.
Marina Rubina, last name R-U-B-I-N-A.
Thank you.
This is Jimmy Ayodelle, and that's A-Y-O-D-E-L-E.
Okay, thank you.
Marlin Ayodelle, A-Y-O-D-E-L-E.
And Mr. Muller, the record should show that, um, Mr. Ayodelle's first name is spelled J-I-M-I.
My lead on the case is, is on the application, more akin to.
Oh, okay, okay. I just, when he's preparing a resolution, I just want to make sure he refers to your name properly.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Muller, thank you so much, uh, Madam Chair, um, members of the board. First, thank you so much, both. For the, the initial discussion that you had here with your professionals tonight and the discussion we had. Uh, last month in, in preparation for tonight. We're very appreciative of. The process that we've laid out here and, and I think you heard from your professionals correctly, um, in, in really all regards here and, and a lot of very. Interesting and, and helpful comments were made and just as we start, I'm going to hit on a few of them. First. As a, as a reminder, some of you were, were here in December of 2022 for concept review and certainly agreed with Mr. Lesko's. Uh, take on how that works. We, we heard and showed as concept and very much appreciated the opportunity to get that feedback. This. Um, uh, two ADU, two single-family home subdivision. Design and, and part of that feedback resulted in the plan that we'll be showing you tonight that does have, um, this. We'll call them buckets. There are, uh, as of last month, there were maybe three. But we're talking about of these variances, um, divided by each lot, two buckets of variances. One. Uh, the ones, um, related to the size of the lots and you'll hear and see tonight, uh, you know, to a, a very kind of astute. Question before about the standard and, and definitely agreed, it, you know, it is, it is our burden on the positive and, and. And negative, um, uh, but you know, how far out do you go? Well, we'll, we'll show you the neighborhood, um, and ultimately, well, there are lots bigger and smaller. Um, but we'll, we'll show you how this fits in, um, with other lots that are, that are, that are smaller on the block and, and the surrounding area and how we feel that these. Lot size, while slightly undersized, fit in, are actually bigger than many of the lots, um, in the neighborhood. The, the second bucket, I know we're talking about variances here, um, relate to the feedback we got from the concept and one. Totally agree, that's not binding. And two, just to make you guys more comfortable, I think some of the interpretation on the number of variances. Uh, kind of, th- this was new two years ago. Um, it's more refined now in terms of thinking about. Accessory structures in terms of neighborhood character and the main home addressing the street. In terms of the door of the ADU facing or not facing the street. To be honest with you, I think. A lot of us, myself included, left concept thinking, oh, it's just one variance, you know, we think that, uh, putting a, an ADU that's in front with it, with, uh. Yeah, it should address the street or, or face the street with a front door. I mean, you know, in my mind, maybe at the time that was one variance. When you, when you look at it over time and with the, the new, uh, way of interpreting these things that's developed over time since then. You know, it adds up to six, um, and over two lots, uh, Mr. Muller makes a, a good point, you need to be cognizant about whether. This reaches that Humbert level and that was one lot and 16 variances. We have two lots and 12, but you know, we want to make sure that the board is comfortable and we'll be talking about that tonight and. And frankly, while we feel that's a better plan, um, with the ADUs in front, with the doors of the smaller structure in the front. Facing the street, um, uh. That has add up to six and we would be comfortable, uh, with a different plan, um, and coming back perhaps with, with reversing that and removing all six of those variances. But we want to talk through it because we think that is better and, and also to Mr. Muller's point. It, um, we feel that the variances in the subdivision, which are very much related to, uh, and we think a, a, a C2 variance that we'll hear about, but. Are lots that are bigger than most in these neighborhoods. And ultimately, if you come to the conclusion that that is appropriate for this neighborhood. Those justifications can be separate from the plan that we'll be showing you that triggers the, the site plan and this ADU. Um, configuration. So, uh, to Mr. Muller's point, as we show this and discuss it, uh, those are, you know. A, a very interesting approach to it and one that we're not opposed to. We, we're showing you what with the feedback we developed from concept, we think. Is the best use of this site and the best plan for this property, um. But, uh, you know, a- agree and recognize, uh, that, uh, those, those comments, uh, you know, ring true in some respect and, and are. You know, happy to talk about this. Uh, I'll, I'll apologize for the, the measles. I think, uh, my, my computer was inoculated, but we will be showing exhibits that do not. You know, have all those buttons across it and, um, on the current, what would they call it, ADU? But, you know, there's a, there's a home. On the site that we'll, you'll, you'll see, uh, that at one point perhaps was a flat that we were going to come back, um, uh, as Mr. Bridger said, there was a start of an application for ADU. Got to pause that, um, uh, while we thought of this ironically, what would be required to make that ADU and in its. Prior, in its prior flat condition compliant as an ADU now would be to move the front door that's there that faces the street. To a different direction. So if we had paused this subdivision application and gone back and said, let's, let's take that what used to be a flat part of the house. Resurrected as an ADU, we would be moving the door around and there'll be a lot of discussion, I think, tonight about. Structures presenting or facing the street, how front doors should be oriented, um, uh, and, um. And, and ultimately what makes the most sense, you know, those six variances would go away, uh, kind of like, uh, you know, uh, with. With respect to what, what happened last month, it's our goal to, to make sure that there are things that we can, uh. Flexibility that the applicant has, um, we, we want to show that and that is one of the things, you know, we, we again, we. We feel we're going to show you something that makes the most sense and we think it's consistent with the general feedback that we got last year, but we know that's not binding and. And ultimately there will be a level of comfort, we think, with this plan as presented. Um, but ultimately it will be a kind of a cumulative, um, um, thinking. About whether that plan makes enough sense to warrant that number of variances and we think it does. We think it's different than Humbert. One lot, uh, with 16 there, but recognize there's no bright line there and, and, um, you know. Weird for me as an applicant's attorney to say, we want you to be comfortable, but ultimately, um, the, the priority of this applicant, um. Uh, homeowner, by the way, we're, we're not, it's, it's interesting to talk about, you know, conditioning on the, on the demolition, you know, that, that those all will need. To happen ultimately, but you know, they live here. These are homeowners that have lived in this, 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 um. This property rather than, or ultimately they will need some help to in, um. Create what is envisioned here, uh, but ultimately these are, these are regular Princeton folks who are looking at what they think is best for their oversized lot. Um, on Union Street.
Ryan.
Okay.
While you take a breath, I, I want to. Interject a question.
Yeah.
Um, and this relates to, you know, Jerry's remarks about the possibility of. The board granting just the subdivision and not the site plan. And based on what you are saying about the six variances related to the placement of the ADUs. And the location of the front door going away, if you reverse the buildings. Jerry said something about being before the zoning board if we just granted the subdivision, but. I take from you that you would be as of right developers as long as the. Up, the primary residence was in front. And the ADUs were in back. Once, once the subdivision is granted. You could easily come in with a completely conforming application for each of these lots, correct?
So I'll say yes, though I'm going to back, back a little bit away from the word easily because, um. Again, subsequent to concept, I think in thinking this through, the, the understanding and, you know, you mentioned site plan before. It is the two lots and a period of time and a cumulative number of dwellings essentially between ADUs. As it turns out, and the homes that ultimately could trigger site plan review. So Mr. Muller is completely correct. A subdivision would allow, would turn these into two lots, just like most of them on this street, frankly, and, and just every other owner with those lots. Many of which smaller than this, than these would envision to be, could come, uh, either as of right to build a, a single-family home with an ADU behind it. Or if they needed a bulk variance for driveway or something like that, would go to the zoning board and that, that is, you're completely correct that that would be the situation. If subdivided, except that interestingly, two subdivided lots. Owned in common at one point by the same person, if developed even independently within too close a period of time. Would trigger site plan review, almost like why similar how to minor, minor subdivisions, if you keep adding them up would turn into a, uh. Major subdivision, a similar concept exists with site plans, which we would trigger if we didn't wait long enough. I, I honestly, I think that, you know, if we got to it and that's where the board's comfort was, and we might see a subdivision, maybe a house and an ADU. Soon, maybe someone five years from now coming and doing a, 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 a house in an ADU. We would probably lose the, the common driveway in that scenario, maybe, and not necessarily, but you know, that, that's part of the, the. Site plan element of things, um, but you know, again, it's a, it's a common thing that you see throughout Princeton, you know, two homes with a shared driveway. Anyway, it's possible that could happen, but if they're not developed in tandem, less likely, you know, if you're at the zoning board every month. We, we hear, oh, we'd love if you could do a shared driveway with your neighbor. Well, if they're not building houses at the same time, it's, it's almost not going to happen. Here we have that. Opportunity potentially, um, but again, to your, to your point, minus the. Time constraint for site plan review, you've got it exactly right and we would either never be before the zoning board. Or perhaps a future owner would be there with a, a bulk variance or two about driveway size or, or something like that.
Yeah, and, and I just want to point out to the rest of the board that part of the reason that I'm asking this question. Is that I think, um. Having this before us as a site plan gives us an opportunity to negotiate. Some favorable outcomes that might be lost, um, if we just grant the subdivision. So I just want people to be thinking about that as you're thinking about Jerry's, um, suggestion.
Thanks, Mr. Gold. Um, with that, that'll, that'll end my, uh. Explanation and, and, and not testimony, um, and I'll allow, um, we've got the homeowners here. For those of you here in December of, oh, gosh, a year and a half ago, you heard their story, but if I, I'll let, you know, they're, they're here at Prince residence and not developers and. Uh, Jimmy and, and Marlon, if you want to just quickly introduce yourself and, and remind the board or tell the board that wasn't here for concept. You know, why you're looking at this and why this is your, your, your path and why you engage this team to kind of look at this for you.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan, and, um, good evening, everyone. So thanks again for reviewing the development plan for our property at 469 Union Street. Um, by way of introduction, I'm Jimmy. This Marlon Ayodelle, and we are the owners of 469 Union Street. We moved to Princeton 15 years ago during the, uh, during the recession. You know, rather traumatic unplanned relocation, but our decision to move to Princeton proved to be perfect. You know, the town was welcoming to our family, especially our children and we thrived in the neigh- in the community. We deliberately purchased a house, a legal flat, well, which we found out in last year now, and also in this discussion that it wasn't legal. But we actually did think it was legal and we actually test, we, it was a approved apartment. It, every year we went for permits to, 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 um, to get the apartment. Um, to rent out the apartment. So it was a bit of a surprise to us that it wasn't, um, legal, um, now that we're talking about it. But anyway, at the time, we, we, we deliberately purchased a home with a legal flat. Now called an ADU primarily so that we could financially afford to be in the community. And it has become a, you know, a critical part of our retirement strategy. And, uh, we're very glad to see that the Princeton master plan kind of is following this other direction, um, going forward. Um, as our children went through Princeton public school system, all three, all three, all children went through Princeton public school system. All three children see Princeton as their lifelong base anchored by us. Lastly, my wife, Marlin, works for, uh, Princeton University and I work for a company called Bio Haven Pharmaceuticals. Which is based in Yardley, Pennsylvania. So essentially, uh, that means that our professional lives continue to be rooted in the community. Um, we are sharing all of this as context in terms of our gratitude and continued commitment to Princeton. As empty nesters, which triggered a lot of this new thinking for us. Uh, we had listed our home for sale in 2022 with two listing options. One listing had us moving into the ADU and selling our main house. And, uh, this was actually our preferred approach, but would require some investment for final compliance. The second listing we placed was to sell the entire house as, at the guidance of the sales agent. The house has many renovations that predate our ownership and we have found that modern buyers cannot accept the current floor plan. And the primary reason is the fact that the primary bedroom is on the second floor while all the other bedrooms are on the first floor. Um, the two offers we received were likely the result of. Would have resulted in substantial renovation or an expanded footprint to resolve the issue. Buyers were very interested because of the size of the lot, which then gave us, you know, but gave very limited value to the home. By our calculations anyway. This prompted us to rethink our strategy. The plan being presented today creates an option for us to remain in a smaller home in the community. And neighborhood we love and to do it in a way that makes financial sense. Today's meeting is a follow-up to the positive feedback we received at the concept review meeting, uh, you know, quite a while ago now. And we're very, we've been very transparent from day one and we continue to be transparent. Uh, and showing you our full intent, um, uh, with the property. So we look forward to a favorable decision on our plans today and thank you again for taking the time.
Thank you.
So much. Uh, our, our next, uh, witness, um, uh, our architect, Marina, I know you've testified with this board many times, but if you could briefly. Um, introduce yourself and your credentials so I can have you, uh, offered as an expert here this evening.
Good evening. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Great. So my name is Marina Rabina. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Um, I have a master's degree in architecture and structural engineering and I have testified in front of, um, multiple boards. Um, both in the state of New Jersey and California, uh, hopefully. That allows me to be an expert witness this evening.
We accept your qualifications and you're, you're, um. Testifying, I mean, I guess this is self-evident, but as, as an architect, not with any other, okay, all right, good.
That is my license, yes, so I would be the architect today, yes. Uh, and if that's okay, I would like to share my screen, assuming I can do the PowerPoint. Is that okay?
Please do, and Mr. Muller, this will be our one exhibit this evening.
Am I doing this correctly, hopefully?
Yes.
Um, okay, let's see if I can figure out, it's going to work for me. Yay, okay, great. So, um, and Justin already showed the context, but, um, I'm going to. Quickly walk us through this again. Hopefully, everybody's oriented. Um, the site is located right here on Ewing Street. In very close proximity to the shopping center. And, um, what is not shown here, but this is very much walking distance to other destinations in town, which makes this. An amazing place to live and, um, walking distance to jobs at Princeton University. And downtown locations, and this is very much walking distance to schools. Um, here we are showing the outline of the site one more time.
As you go through this, if you can say what slides are on.
Oh goodness, okay, so this is going to be slide number four, okay, so if I forget, hopefully somebody will. Help me and remind me. Um, so this is the zoning map outlining that we're in the midst of, um, our six township zone. Okay, great, and as we were trying to organize our, oh goodness. Um, information, we were trying to sort of figure out how to explain it and Ryan kept saying that this is. We got to put these variances in buckets, so this is exactly how we're going to be going about it. So the first orange bucket, so everybody's going to be oriented, uh, color-wise.
And this is slide five.
This is slide five, um, have to do with lot size and, um. So area is slightly undersized, I will show exactly on the next, um. Portion of the presentation and lot width is very much similar to other and lot frontage, even though it's the same. Fact that it's the same width, it is counted as both frontage and, um, width, so that, that's a, a two-part. So we allocate that, our orange button bucket is basically. All the things that have to do with the shape and size of the lot and they're very similar to other lots in the neighborhood. Then we have our blue bucket, which is what all the, the discussion was and we feel that. Um, this is the information that we presented at concept and received feedback. And that's how we moved forward, but as discussed, if that is no longer the preferred way. That could be rearranged. That was our understanding of the feedback and we moved forward. With that understanding, based on the fact that it fits the neighborhood character and we will go through and explain how we feel that works.
That's slide seven, now moving to eight.
And then, um, we used to have this green bucket, which is why we had this confusion last time, but. It had to do with windows and roofs. There was some misunderstanding about that, but as all eliminated, no more green bucket, no need to worry about it anymore. So now we're going to talk about our orange bucket. So this is slide twelve over here and this identifies, uh, from the staff memo. What are the things that are requiring variances, um, right here, so you could see it's the lot width, lot frontage, which is. Kind of how wide it is and also because the lots are a little bit, it's not a rectangle, it's a parallelogram, so it gets a little bit narrower. Towards, um, the back. Uh, so here is the lot in the context and hopefully everybody could see, so we, what we would like to point out, the color coding here is. All these red, um, lots that are in the same block, literally one block away. Are right here, they're existing, they've been like that for a very long time, they're point two one acre. While once we subdivide, hopefully with your permission, our larger lot. Um, these newly subdivided lots would be larger than these existing lots. So for example, here we have this red. Outline that demonstrates that if these two lots fifteen and sixteen were combined. They would be point four two, while this existing lot is point four four, so it kind of puts it in perspective. So these lots on the opposite side of us, they're, um, not conforming just, um, in a different way. So the lot, the required lot width is eighty-five. And, um, these are seventy-five, so it, in all of this vicinity, we're having a variety of non-conformances. So we present.
To the left, those are non-conforming but smaller than our lot, to the right, they're non-conforming but a little bigger than what we.
A little bit bigger, exactly, so. In the same, there are sort of multiple levels of non-conformity, but these are already smaller than what we're proposing to be created today. And, um, I think at the concept review, the question was, is this a unique condition in just this block? And I think, um, we went through and outlined, uh. This doesn't differentiate because there are multiple variances, so these are all the lots in the neighborhood that are not conforming in one way or another. Some are not wide enough, some are not large enough, some are not wide and don't have enough frontage, so they're, they're. There's a gamut of non-conformities of all sorts, so.
And we're dealing with slide fourteen.
Correct, thank you so much for keeping track for me. Uh, so hopefully that puts it a little bit in context and on here on the slide fifteen. Going back to, so this is one of our, uh, yeah. Justin has a question.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. So I just want to clarify. Uh, I, I'm, I'm losing track a little of the colors, so. When you say non-conforming, do you mean lot size? And lot.
So they're, they're, they're non-conforming in some way. We, we were also trying to keep track and try to color code in different way. And we just. We just thought like too many colors, we're just going to show conforming, not conforming. So the ones that were over here. Shown in red are non-conforming. So for example, right here next to us, these are, um. These are not conforming in width and frontage.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, any of these red are non-conforming in one of the three ways.
One or more.
Yes, yes, okay.
That's how we were trying to, because they're all non-conforming in multiple ways.
And and Justin, if it, if it helps, um, and I, I feel like I end up quoting Meatloaf way too often at these hearings, but, um. Uh, the, the ones to the left, if, if it is a lot area and also every case, that is all three of the conditions that we're talking about with. Frontage and area to the ones to the right, um, of our lot, if, if it, if they do not, if they meet area. Um, it's the two variances though for width and frontage, so it's either two or three. Um, if it's, if it's area, it's all three of the conditions. If it's with, it's also frontage as well.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, right, so that when we tried to color code based on number of variances, it got completely rainbow, so we just like, okay, better stick to one color. Uh, so here, uh, we're going to go back to zoomed in version, so, um, this is. The subdivision plan, hopefully I'm calling this correctly, uh, so here to the right of us is the existing lot. And what would be these proposed lots are very similar in size, uh, what exists in the neighborhood. So these would be, um. Larger than these red lots and, um, approximately the same width, but a little bit smaller than these guys on the right. So the lot area that would be created is ninety-five, ninety-eight square feet while required is ten thousand eight hundred and ninety. And the proposed width, and you see because it's a parallelogram, so, uh, the proposed width, um. Oh, I think I got my numbers wrong, actually, the, the frontage would be sixty-seven point thirty-seven when eighty-five is required. And lot width would be sixty-one point five, because as it gets narrower, where the building is, is that where you measure the lot width. Hopefully I got that correct.
Right, and that's slide fifteen.
Yes, okay, um. So, uh, oh yeah, just to go back over here to mention that when, when these guys get subdivided. They would still be wider than these sixty-foot lots, right? So here at the back is one hundred and twenty-one feet. So even at the very rear, they will be wider than these guys right here. Okay, did I hopefully said everything I'm supposed to on this slide? Um, okay, so this is the picture of the existing home. Um, and this is that famous door. That, um. If this were to be converted to comply with the current ADU regulations, having a door of the ADU face the front. Would not be conforming, so this door would have to be eliminated and a door on the side or on the back would have to be created.
Slide sixteen.
Slide sixteen. So what we were, um, starting to think about is if one wanted to. Um, purchase this lot, um. And create one single family home, that single family home could be four thousand eight hundred square feet plus additional attics and basements. It would be a very large home and it would really stand out in this neighborhood. Um, so another configuration could be if somebody were, and this would be as of right development, it would require no variances. Um, if, for example, an alternative solution would be if this home was replaced with a freestanding. Um, single family home and accessory dwelling unit. Um, these also would be very substantial, it would be a thirty-eight hundred. Square feet home and a nine hundred square feet ADUs and they could also have various basements or attics in some configuration.
Marina, before you leave slide eighteen, which we were just on. The, uh, there's going to be a lot of discussion, um, about ADUs being in front or or lining up with, with the neighboring properties here. Um, the, the ultimate plan we're going to show, I think, shows ADUs that are, uh, match the front yard setback of the neighboring homes, which. I think we're seeing here as well. So why is it that this is compliant, perhaps, that, that what we'll show later requires six.
I have a whole slide to describe that. It's really hard to explain this now, but basically. When the home is in front of the ADU, if the ADU is set back. Um, then this front yard issue wouldn't be triggered, but it's really hard to explain in this view, but. We do have a slide where we can show exactly how that works out, but thank you for bringing it. And the door would not be allowed to face the street. Obviously, the door would face the side. Um, so here to, to go back to what we think, um, is.
Slide nineteen.
Slide nineteen is a configuration that we feel, first of all, when these two lots would be created. They would be very much in scale with the other lots and in some cases even larger than the lots that are already existing in the neighborhood. And then, as we discussed, um, in our concept review and it seemed to have positive review at that point, that we've. We thought that locating smaller homes in front would be preferred because that would be. A better way to continue the current fabric of the neighborhood. Um, and, um, I did have pictures of other homes in the neighborhood that are surrounded. These are computer models, but we do have pictures that are coming later. So that talks about the size of the lot in relationship to other sizes of the lots in the neighborhood. So that's our orange bucket of lot-related issues. So now we're going to go to our blue bucket. Of things that have to do with the location of the ADUs. Uh, so this is our site plan with a little bit of color coding. And so this shows here would be the two individual lots created and this would be sixty-seven feet wide here while. The other lots on the street are sixty and then it would still be larger than sixty at the back, but, um. Uh, sixty-one or something along those lines. So, um, this here. What we're hoping to show is, again, our understanding that this was a preferred configuration because this would match. The neighborhood character with smaller buildings located in the front. And when we came originally to the concept review, we had the doors of the ADU face the side because. That's what the ordinance said and we were actually advised to relocate the door to face the front and I will explain later why. We thought that was a good suggestion, but to orient everybody, that would be ADU in the front. And we feel that this is a, a good configuration because, um, the ADU is a smaller home, obviously. And it would have a smaller yard and would have kind of a small private space over here. The front yard would be very much consistent with all the other homes on the street. And it would be large and open and green and have our sort of green infrastructure located there, but it's not something that's private where you could. You know, do things that people want to do in their backyards, so ADUs would have private yards tucked in kind of over here on the side. And then the large homes, well, the larger homes of the two, they're eighteen hundred square feet, so it's not really easy to call them too large. Um, so they would be located towards the back and we felt that this was a better way to go because this allows us. To use the garages that are allowed towards the back of the property to go with the larger homes, so it makes sense, so somebody would be. Um, you know, parking in their garage, walking into their home and having a yard that's kind of private and tucked in in the back. So that was the logic. Um, so this would be the configuration, what we thought would work well here, so there would be a shared driveway. And people would kind of turn into their respective homes and then they would have again, so this is a good way to show. So he would be kind of a L-shaped ADU that kind of creates a private patio. A place for people to kind of hang out in a small space and a larger private yard in the back and then those are the two garages in the back. And because they're built at the same time, they could be attached to each other and could be on the property line. So this is that confusing situation with the front yard setback that hopefully this slide. Slide twenty-three, hopefully would explain. So if we look at the prevailing front yard setback. This is calculated by the municipality and it, it's, you know, here's the front yard setback. That is meant to comply so that all the homes in the neighborhood are approximately in the same location and maintain consistent. Relationship to the street, which feels like a really good plan, so we are fully compliant, there are no violations. This is exactly what the measurement is. However, in the township definition. The way that the definition is written, hopefully I understand this correctly, uh, Derek will correct me if I don't understand this correctly. Is, um, there is this additional definition that the shortest distance between the building line and the front of the lot. Is how the front setback is defined. So this would not be applicable in a borough, this is only a township issue. So to demonstrate this visually. Because the house is in the back, this is considered the building line. So therefore, even though we're compliant with all the prevailing and we line up with all the other houses. This creates the issue that the ADU is in violation. Right? So hopefully, we are understanding this correctly. But again, what we feel is we're really achieving what was meant with the prevailing setback. By here's the prevailing setback, we're not in violation of anything there. We're maintaining a consistent relationship to the street. Um, oh yeah.
So, excuse me for interrupting, um, but, so this does or does not trigger a setback variance?
Well, see, this.
Is that, is that a, is that a Derek question or a Kennedy question?
I can give you my version. I know Derek's version will be correct, whereas mine will be. Um, at least my my take on it, but we.
Yours will be yours, yeah.
We have a, we have a setback variance in that the ADUs are in the front yard setback. They're not supposed to be in that space. From a numbers perspective, we are, uh, you know, that your traditional, the building is too close or too far. Um, we do not have an issue, um, you know, as far as the prevailing setbacks and that number goes, we do not have a variance for that. The variance is just that this structure, whether it's the primary or, well, in this case, the accessory structure is in front. Of the primary building rather than a number situation.
But I didn't see that identified as a, and maybe I missed it. I didn't see it identified as a variance.
It is identified as a variance of locating the ADU in the front yard.
Okay, well, I thought those were two separate issues, although I understand they're completely joined at the hip. Mister, Mister Bridger, do you want to opine?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. So Marina is correct, the. ADUs are not permitted in the front yard, and the difference is in the borough, the front yard is the distance of the front yard setback. So technically, if the front yard setback was thirty feet. And then AD was past the thirty-foot setback, it would comply with the borough ordinance. In the township, the front yard is measured from the property line to the building line of the principal dwelling. Which is all that they're said at the back of the lot, so this is a variance because the ADUs are located in the front yard. And the ordinance doesn't per-permit that.
So, uh, yeah, so I think we're, hopefully I diagrammed what Derek just explained. So it's not that we're too close to the property line, right? So it's just the fact that in that, because it's in front of the house, nothing is allowed to be there.
Got it, okay.
Right? So.
Yeah.
Would effectively by us staying in line with all the other homes and maintaining that consistent frontage. We have violated this situation. So it it's kind of, hopefully this was diagrammatically clear enough, but it, you know, it's not easy to explain.
You know, I think it's probably worthwhile, uh, Marina, for the record, just explaining what the prevailing front setback is.
Uh, I think maybe Dan Weisman would be a better person to explain how he calculates it. But, um, in our ordinance, um, the town requires us to, um. Calculate, uh, so we usually, it's not just a number. That is, front setback is not a number, like five, right? It's something that you need to contact the municipality and they calculate it for you. In it, so for example, if the prevailing setback is thirty-five feet, while the minimum required is twenty-five. If the difference is more than five feet, then the prevailing is applicable, right? I think it's five feet. So.
Is that the average setback of the other buildings on the?
Yes, it's an average of the homes in the surrounding vicinity. What I don't remember is how far both ways it goes, and then I don't really know. Because I contact Dan Weisman and Dan Weisman just does it.
Mister Weisman?
How, how does Dan do it? I don't know.
Uh, it, the process is right, uh, the measurement is taken five hundred feet in either direction of the property. Um, the setbacks, uh, are measured for each dwelling within five hundred feet. Um, including the the dwelling on the lot in question. Um, and then the highest and lowest values, uh, from those setbacks are excluded from the calculation. Um, essentially to take out any anomalies.
Right, but is it true to sort of the idea there is we don't want anomalies? We want buildings on average to kind of maintain alignment with the street, right? That's kind of the goal of this.
It's an average calculation.
Right, right. Okay, so hopefully we didn't confuse anybody completely over here.
Nope, thank you, go ahead.
Woo, okay, so these are the homes on, um, looking to the right and looking to the left. And, um, given the scale of these existing homes on the street. We felt that it was appropriate to locate, um, the smaller structures. And because they're following the prevailing setback, that it would make sense for them to be kind of approximately in line. And the same scale. So as you could see, what, okay, yes, now we're in slide twenty-seven. So see this garage right here is this garage right here. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to continue that same relationship to the street in terms of. Um, scale of the buildings, and we feel that that's a better fit. Um, so again, what we would like to just confirm one more time. That the homes themselves are not requiring any variances, they're compliant, the garages are compliant. Um, and the reason, again, we felt that the larger homes would be better in the back, because then they would go with the garages. And they would have the more private yards, which seem more fitting with, you know, if somebody had a child who was playing in the yard. That seemed like a logical place for them to be. Uh, so, oh yeah, here's an example so that you could see. So here would be, um, one of those rear yards where, you know, we expect to have large. Um, windows where smaller homes with larger windows feel like they're open and inviting. And have this indoor-outdoor relationship, and somebody would come out of their garage and, you know, go into their back door with their groceries. So it seemed kind of a logical, um, thing to do. And again, everything's fully compliant to height, and all of those things have been checked. Um, and then this is an example of that little patio where the ADUs, because they're smaller. We felt like it was appropriate for them to have a smaller outdoor space. Um, but still, again, we, we tried really hard to create everybody to have privacy, because we feel that. Uh, we're able to create that, but they don't get a garage. They had a a parking space. Uh, let's see, so going back to the whole question of the door facing the street. So we feel that, um, our understanding of the ordinance is that. The ordinance intent was to whatever is near the street has a door facing the street. And that has a direct relationship to the street where from the street, you could see where somebody's front door is. And because in this case, it's technically an ADU in front. It it could a little bit creates of a conflict that the ADU door is not supposed to be facing the front. But I think the intent was, hopefully, that whatever's in front has a front door that's very clear and welcoming to the street. And that we heard was the recommendation of the concept review. However, if you felt strongly that the door shouldn't face the street, it's not the end of the world. We could turn the door around and not have it face the street, right? We will still have a porch. So right now we have a door facing the street, but the door could face the side, right? We heard this as a positive, so that's why we actually reoriented the the houses to have that. Um, and then the problem with the door of the main house, the main house door actually is facing the street. But because there's something in front, you can't see it. Um, so it it is following the regulations, but because it's in the back, you can't see it. So we feel that the current configuration actually follows the logic of. What the neighborhood character ordinance says, but the the exact configuration doesn't quite meet the letter of the law. Um, and then we had a whole fourth bucket of things that were, um. Related to like the windows were slightly off and the measurement of the height was slightly off. So that's all gone. This is. Slide thirty-two, no need to worry about that anymore. Uh, so, uh, I was gonna pause right here. That was a flood of information. So I am happy to go back to any slides or hear any concerns or any thoughts or any. Questions, ideas, um.
Ms. Rafina, can, can you go back to slide thirty-one? I have one question. Um, out of curiosity, it seems, um, and I understand the front door faces the street. But to me, it still looks as if this is a side facade with with no windows. And I, and I'm just wondering if that, you know, and I obviously no architect. So, um, I'd like for you to speak to, you know, whether this really does, um. Address the street in a meaningful way, um, especially compared with other. Other dwellings, and I know these are architecturally distinctive from other dwellings, so I'm not.
I think you're you're picking up on actually, um, something that is correct. That we have since updated our drawings to have more windows facing the street. And, um, that that issue has been in slightly outdated, um, slides from the previous version. So we do have more windows facing the street.
And was that part of removing bucket three? In other words, the the neighborhood character did require more windows facing the street.
Uh.
Bucket three, I believe, was just.
No, that, that had to do with the side, actually, I think. Um, but I can, I think if you give.
Yeah, since we're asking about questions related to architecture, why don't you show us whatever image later in the presentation? Shows the current proposed view from the street.
I believe we'll have to mark this as a separate exhibit.
So I'm in a.
Plans that were submitted, but we didn't have a slide on this one.
Yeah, so I'm gonna pull up this view, um, so this would be a bit, you know, better view.
Marina, before you start, if we could just i-identify what we're looking at, this was the plans, the updated plans that were, uh, submitted, maybe by by date. And then we could ask to have this marked.
So this revision has actually been quite a while ago. So this is, um, eight thirty-one twenty-three, um. You can see right here, so we were missing a window on the elevation, um, but this, um. This is the one that had a measurement height issue that was corrected. Um, yeah, so here we are, this would be the front facade. Um, we have the door, we have a little, um, storage shed access over here.
Is on the left, is on the left image, I'm sorry, right, correct?
Correct, yes, right here, right here, yep, yep. So this is our, um, floor plan here, da-da-da-da-da, where, where do we go? Yes, so here we are. So you walk into the home, um, and we have a little bit of a bicycle storage right here at the front. Um, furnace, mechanical room, things like that. And then we have a bedroom here at the corner that, um, looks on one side towards the patio. And on the other side towards the street, and then we have kind of a bathroom duct here in the middle. And then we have a, I don't know what we call it, living dining room, combined everything space. Again, creating this, um, patio that we feel is kind of protected and tucked in there. So, um, that, that's the configuration. So hopefully that explains that. And then this is the elevation that goes with it. But if again, um, there were suggestions or comments of, you know, how you would like to see this. Modified, I don't see why we would be opposed to additional suggestions or recommendations.
Marina, if I just might, just from a technical perspective, we're looking at the architectural plans that were, uh, for the home on the right side. And maybe we can have that marked as A two this evening, just so we know what we're talking, what we're looking at.
Right.
Uh, correct, and I think that in his letter, um, Dan identified that the lot on the right-hand side would be four sixty-nine. And this is, um, shown right here, and the one on the left would be four seventy-one. So this one right here identified as four sixty-nine.
And and your testimony was that we we think that, you know, the the comment was that the the view on the the front elevation on the left. Perhaps, uh, could could use some additional front-facing windows. And generally, you think that if that's the the feedback, that that's something that could be accommodated, uh, in some way with the design.
If if everyone felt that was needed, we can certainly work on that.
Mister Cohen and then Mister O'Donnell.
Yeah, I, I just quickly took a look at the neighborhood character, and there is a requirement that you need. For a street-facing wall, a minimum of ten percent fenestration. I think you're a little short here. I don't know if Derek did look at that in his review. Um, so maybe he could, he could respond, but I certainly, I thank Chair Wilson for bringing this up. And I would absolutely support having a more active facade facing.
Sure, I don't see why not. I think that in our, um, what would be super useful to figure out is. Whether the ADU should be in the front or ADU should be in the back. If ADU should be in the front, which way should the door face? And then, once we have that kind of solidified, then we would be happy to tweak the design to. Um, you know, add more windows by, I have never complained about having more.
Understood, understood Marina, but at the same time, I want to be super clear. Whether this is actually a variance condition currently or not, or if it's just a discussion of aesthetics, so.
Got it, okay, so I.
I'm I'm asking Derek to answer the question of whether he looked at the percent fenestration on the street-facing walls.
I'm gonna have to take another look at it, David. I think it might be a little short of the.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, so this might be addition, if we didn't change it, it might be additional relief that the applicant would need.
I'll, I'll submit that, um, one, we we didn't think about or or notice for that variant, so I don't think we'd be asking for it. Our, our, um, our offer to the board would be both to, one, to accommodate the very good comment that we received about. You know, visually, and two, that we would, uh, even if the 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 board would not agree with the, with Mister Cohen and and the the chairwoman. About that, and I frankly think you should, um, uh, we would be certainly not asking for, or, you know, we would be revising to add more windows. Just for to remove if there is a variance condition, so I'll submit that.
Right, I think my understanding is, and maybe this is why I thought it was compliant, is that the front door. Is part of that calculation, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
It is.
Yes, then between the front, in front door and the windows, I thought that it worked, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Uh, Mister O'Donnell, did you, did you have a question? Your hand went up and then it came down.
Yes, it did come down. Uh, now my question is, uh, has been rendered moot.
Yeah, okay, Mister Lesko.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Marina, you mentioned earlier, um, that the intention was to match the neighborhood character with a smaller building. In the front. Um, are you aware of any other parcels, uh, in the neighborhood? That then have a larger building than that in the rear?
Well, I guess across the street, it is a little bit of a, um. Where there are certain lots that go deeper. That there do have structures in the back, but they're not on the same lot. So I think it kind of a different configuration, um, where the older homes are kind of closer to the street. But the newer homes are set back, but they're not in the same lot.
Mm-hmm, but.
Because the configuration of the lots are very different, because they're kind of like in 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 not. Parallel to the street, but more perpendicular to the street.
Mm-hmm, regardless of whether they're on the same lot or not, they're not directly behind, though, correct?
Correct, right, and just to be completely clear, we're not asking for any height variances. Although the larger homes are in the back, they're fully conforming to all of the, all of the height regulations. So there's no, no relief of any height-related issues at all.
So if they were swapped, then there's no height variance, there's no FAR variance.
Nope.
It would essentially be by right for the structures.
Correct, right, so our intent was, we thought that we. We presented this configuration and it was well-received, and we perceived that that was a preferred option and moved forward with this. However, if that, that is not the case. Then the other configuration will be conforming, because the buildings are conforming. There's nothing but the buildings themselves that is like too high or too big or, you know. Apart from confirming that we have the correct percentage of glazing, which I think we did, but maybe not, um. Um, so if we don't have enough windows, we'll certainly be happy to add some more.
Marina, perhaps if you could put your, put the slide back and and remove the the uh A two from the screen, just so as as we finish up this part of the conversation, we can look at either uh nineteen.
So open the other.
Yes.
Point, okay, hold on, hold on.
And and while she's doing that to 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 maybe phrase the the excellent point that Mr. Lesko just made there. The the way that we approached this and the feedback we got, um, when you again, not binding, but you know, the 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 direction we were leaning towards um um uh and and different visions can can arise over time was that the the front structures being the smaller, the ADU kind of matched the the setback and the height of some of the surrounding homes better than a a a fuller uh two-story home would. Uh, but uh, you know, maybe another way of phrasing Mr. Lesko's point is that a a traditional ADU behind a uh of of single-family home um structure, I'm not gonna use the word hides it, but it it it's it um it it's less visual, um, you know, you you see the the second, the single-family home that maybe you're used to seeing on a street and and don't see much behind, and you know, that is been the the prevailing development pattern with ADUs so far. Um, granted, maybe not in this neighborhood where the homes are a little bit lower slum, so those are the two kind of considerations that we had. And and both are quite valid, um frankly, and we we went with the one, you know, that we 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 kind of pulled out of uh of out of concept, but again, you know, want to be clear, our our openness to to i- if if the board is both from a, from an aesthetic or planning perspective, just prefers that or is concerned with the number of variances, we are certainly open to to exploring that or 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 revising to to flip, you know, uh, as as Mr. Lesko has kind of indicated there, the the ADUs to the to the primary homes.
Okay, thank you, other other questions for Marina Rubina from.
I guess, um, yeah, I guess um one consideration is that there are some homes on the street where although it's not a um, just trying to think of uh Justin's question, some of the homes on the street, like across the street, there's a smaller portion of the home itself that's at the front. And then, so for example, like a one-story garage or a garage that has been converted to occupable space, like literally across the street, and then the bulk of the home is set back further, so.
If you want to show slide three, might actually show that that home if that's helpful.
Slide three. Slide three, right, so here, for example, this guy right here, where there's kind of a smaller um garage, here's a garage, and then the home itself is back. So they're kind of attached to each other um that way. Um, or here we go, like for example, this guy here, there's a lower portion here, and then there's a a larger addition towards the back, so not the same, but a little bit in that same general um configuration.
Hey, other other questions for Ms. Rubina? Okay, thank you Marina, um, are we moving on now to Mr. Kamalik?
We we would be, and and Marina, well, after after we introduced Jim, I'll ask you to to take back over the screen again, but Jim, if you could unmute yourself, and I know you've testified many times uh before this uh board and and person zoning board, but remind the board uh of your credentials as a, well, as a planner and as a civil engineer.
Sure, um, James Kamalak, licensed professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey. Um, I've been practicing civil engineering and site planning for well over twenty years and have testified before this board on other applications uh in in both regards.
Um, can you tell us just a a little bit more, I know you've been before us many times, but for the record, your your education, you're, yeah, I think you said you're licensed in New Jersey, that.
Yeah, yeah, undergraduate degree from Rutgers, the College of Engineering, and have been practicing civil engineering and site planning for in excess of twenty years.
And your your licenses in both regards are uh um current in New Jersey?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Um, no, uh.
And then Jim, should I put up the slides, would that be okay, or do?
Sure, yes.
Me share screen, okay, all right.
We'll start back up again at slide thirty-four.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I hope I don't miss.
So while while that is happening, I'll I'll suggest, you know, we we first heard the, you know, we oriented the board about the 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 core issues here and the design options. Um, Jim is both a planner and a civil engineer, I thought we'd first talk about some of the technical site issues that were raised about the site and see um if the the board and the professionals have questions or see if we can explain some of those things, you know, circulation and things like that first before we got into some of the the planning concepts here, so uh Marina, I think one more slide thirty-four as a uh uh a site plan. There we go.
And for the benefit of the public, I'll just let people know that um there are eighteen, excuse me, seventeen um people attending who um are observing and are not panelists at this time. Go ahead, Mr. Kamalik, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, so as previously mentioned, um here, we're looking at slide number thirty-four, which is the submitted site plan, and as discussed, we have um, the main single-family dwellings um towards in the rear uh half of the lot, the orange structures that are highlighted here on slide thirty-four, and then at the front um, to the right of your screen in purple are the ADU units. Uh, we've mentioned that we do have a um a shared driveway arrangement going from the frontage on the right side of the screen uh back towards from Ewing Street uh back through the lots to the single-car garage at the rear. Um, and there a single story located at the rear of the lot uh for each of the single-family dwelling units. The site contains uh parking for a total of six parking stalls, and you can see that um, maybe Marina can highlight them, we have one adjacent to the dwelling unit, each of the dwelling units, then a second one uh adjacent to the single-family dwelling units, and then we have an additional in each single-car garage, so a total of six. Um, and that would provide, you know, basically one curb cut along this entire frontage um that both lots would share, and that would be addressed via and access and um access easements as we did highlight on the proposed plan. Uh, we do have utilities that are um entering the lot predominantly um at the top of the page, as you can see, on the south side, and at the bottom of the page, on the north side from Ewing Street to serve both the ADU and the single-family dwelling unit, and then um perhaps if we, well, I guess before we jump to to drainage, you can see that we have highlighted on this plan the uh required setbacks, uh minimum setback lines that we're showing here, fifteen feet in the rear, the sides, and the prevailing setback at the front, which Marina had previously testified and showed you at that color exhibit that the front prevailing setback is satisfied uh as calculated by the municipality. So on the next slide, I think we have slide thirty-five highlights the the overall context of the property with um some elements for addressing some of the um drainage on the property for the new structures and the driveway. Again, as Mr. Weissman mentioned, um, there is a significant amount of paving uh on the property with with the existing driveway and the dwelling and some patios at the rear. Um, and the net increase is about twenty-eight hundred square feet of impervious surface, which we have sufficiently managed via uh two main mechanisms, we have green infrastructure in the form of rain gardens on the right-hand side of the plan, which is in the front yard. They would be landscaped, uh green infrastructure, stormwater management facilities rather um, you know, shallow and planted um as the intent by the municipality for uh small projects like this, this is a small drainage project, um and that would sufficiently manage the um runoff in accordance with the municipality's requirements, um which was confirmed by um, the town's review memos. Um, and then we're also, you know, providing um contouring and grading to ade- adequately convey uh the water from the site uh away from adjacent structures and primarily towards um Ewing Street and then maintaining the drainage patterns uh in the rear yard as well, as so as to not have any negative effect on adjacent properties.
So Jim, uh just maybe to go through a couple of the staff comments while we have this up here, so one one of them on the uh biotension basin, so with the applicant be willing to to work with staff to perhaps alter the the um the sizing of them um a a a bit to accommodate some of the the more technical comments that uh that staff had.
Yeah, w- we can take a look at that, I mean, I think we're open to seeing if we can make some adjustments perhaps to the plan view or the size of the rain gardens in the front yard. And the intent was to utilize that space, number one, but also we did want to preserve um, the trees that we felt we would be able to or or work around them as opposed to, and make our best effort to preserve trees mostly which are around the perimeter of the site, we don't have, we have one single tree that's by the um, the new single-family dwelling near the center of the site, but everything else is is peripheral um, large, um, mostly Norway spruce trees, some Norway maples, et cetera, so we tried our best with tree protection, minimizing grading and the depth of grading um, in close proximity to those trees, so we're certainly open to working with the arborist, and if there's some um, way that we can maybe shrink the plan view of those rain gardens in the front or incorporate another element in the front um to comply with some of those comments, you know, we're open to doing that, I think there was a suggestion in the rear to perhaps put a rain garden at the rear corner um in the upper left-hand portion of this slide. Uh, and our thought was, we re- that's a large tree back there, yes, the stair does come down, I think within eight or nine feet of that tree. Um, which would be, you know, sort of a yeah, framed out stair, but we wanted to see if we could preserve that because of its size. And we wanted to maintain the outdoor space if possible, as opposed to taking the rear yard of a single-family dwelling and making it a rain garden. So if kids want to go out and play, or animals are out back and there's just basic activities, we wanted to try to maintain that area and satisfy the stormwater management component within the front yard, which would be utilized less because of its proximity to the street. Um, but you know, we would certainly be open to seeing how we could modify that that front area, uh but that was our thought on the rear.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, this is for Jim, but also for Dan Weissman to uh respond to. I fully appreciate the wish to save that tree in the uh, I guess that's the southeast uh corner of the of the site. Um, possibly, you know, needing to adjust the front rain gardens. Is there potential with pervious pavement and, you know, uh stormwater uh management under the paved sections of the property to um to replace, you know, to to enhance the stormwater management without violating the, you know, the con- constraints that you were just talking about, Jim?
Yeah, I think that that was one of the ideas that I would look to modify as part of, you know, communicating with Dan if we were able to massage this a little bit. Um, the possibility may exist to do that in the front uh where the ADUs are, um, but not so much in the rear, I think the the ADUs do not have basements, um so that would be more appropriate for pervious pavement within that proximity to focus on that area, but perhaps a conjunction of the two. A portion of pervious pavement with some underground storage connected to a rain garden um for conveyance, et cetera, beyond that point, we might be able to come up with a combination there that could work.
And I'd like to hear from Dan as well, just to get a off-the-cuff reaction.
Absolutely, no, I agree, uh, I I think any combination uh to help reduce the footprint of removing trees uh to build stormwater management, um, it's a little counterproductive, um, what what looked evident from the site plan as a a quick fix to put in a basin at the rear is that there's a trench drain with uh a drainage line discharging um immediately to the rear towards that tree. Um, so it it looked like a good opportunity to either maybe pull that back a little bit. Um, but be happy to work with the applicant to to find other alternatives.
Thank you, thanks for that, Mr. Taylor?
I'd like to discuss just for a moment, again, the issue of trees. I see around the perimeter that there are a number of trees, and I understand there are some very, very large trees, especially in the front. From staff comments, I recall there was a suggestion that while that's certainly ideal, if possible, to save some of those trees as many as possible, that nonetheless, there were risks, there are risks, that over time, these trees may not make it. Could you help us understand the relationship between saving the trees, preserving the trees, these particularly in the front, and what are the risks and the mitigants, if any, that they may not survive?
Well, I I think the driving force is to minimize the amount of disturbance in and around the tree in terms of the proximity and the distance of that disturbance, so if we can um, work on the footprint of the rain gardens, at least in the front, that should help serve to increase that separation. That's um number one, and I think that's true, we've tried to be sensitive to that throughout the site. Um, a few of the trees in Taylor's memo, several of them um, mention trees that are um have disease associated with them or that are in decay uh or that have a like a double uh stem that over the long haul might not be advantageous uh to maintain on the site, and he recommends removal. So we would certainly defer to his judgment with respect to that. Um, but there are several trees that have existing issues that he's recommending be removed, and then he's also recommending replacements um, to make up for them, so in my professional opinion, you know, I would think to address that concern, if we have some aged trees, yes, they're grown in, but if you take a larger tree down, you're replacing it with at least one, two, or you know, possibly more, depending on its its diameter, we can still provide those tree replacements at a greater number, um, which will ultimately last far longer, number one. And we can create, you know, a more dense um vegetative condition around the structures because we're providing more trees on the site in terms of the overall number, so um, I think there's an upside to to a few of these tree replacements that we would have to undertake um in terms of sort of, you know, having regenerating them with more trees and newer trees that will last longer and and be effective.
Um, Mr. Kamalik, to Mr. Taylor's point about the trees in front, do you believe that you could build that center driveway, uh that, you know, the driveway connection to the street between those two very large um spruce trees, I think those are, those are Norway spruces, I'm not sure.
Right, I believe that they are, I think.
You think that, you think that that, those trees could survive the creation of a driveway there, even if it, assuming that you would work with uh Mr. Weissman and reduce the size of the um the rain gardens there and find other ways to manage stormwater?
Well, I think, I guess I would say to answer your question, the tree that's on the north side of the driveway that we were intending to preserve, there's, there are two of them there. No, on the uh, on the south side, up on the top, yeah, up.
Yeah.
And then down, and then down, because the tree is not highlighted. Um, that that may require removal, that particular tree, but the one further up on the page that does have the green circle around it, I think that we would be able to save that, again, the. I think that we would be able to save that. Again, the driveway is not extensively wide in this location. Additionally, I think we'd have to take a look at, you know, that threshold of how much of the. The disturbance. Of the circumference of the tree would be required. So here, I think that tree that's closest to the driveway alike, we would have to be removed, but. The one on the further trees on either side, I think that they would be able to stay. If and and again, I defer to. Taylor, the arborist and Mr. Dobromilsky on that, but we'll we'll kind of work with them to. To have the best scenario possible with those trees.
Yeah, I I would like to hear from Dan Dobromilsky too. Justin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I did just want to follow up on both those comments. So Jim, would you be able to kind of show us which of these trees shown now existing? Are most likely going to be, you know, are just not going to make it through construction based on the municipal arborist memo?
Yeah, I I guess a few of these trees are are proposed. Let me clarify that. The two on top of the page. That have the proposed tree symbol within them, those are proposed, and then we have two on the bottom of the page. One there, one to the back of the ADU. If we start at the back of the site. Behind the single family dwellings. I'd like to discuss that the the two trees there that Marina is highlighting the. The one that's closest to the garage to the right. That likely would have to be removed, but I think that we can preserve the one that's behind that to the left. And that's something that I'll further discuss with him. The one behind the single family dwelling that's at the bottom of the page, just in that same vicinity there. Right there, off the deck. I think he was concerned about that tree as well, and that would likely have to be removed. And then. The trees at the front, we had just talked about that. How can we make adjustments for those larger Norway spruce? I think one near the driveway that I just mentioned that's pretty close needs to be removed. We would do what we can to maintain the others as possible. Obviously, if not, provide a number of replacements there. And then. Near the center of the driveway, we have an existing tree that. We just tried to maintain if we could, and his thought there is because of the proximity of the driveway. And the new structure, that's not likely. Going to be able to be maintained with that existing root base, but you know, I would propose that that would be a good location for a new replacement tree. On that corner and perhaps we can put one on the other side, you know, to create some symmetry there with. With a smaller ornamental tree to provide some some shade trees in that area. So. I think there are a few trees in the memo that we should be able to work around with the arborist and try to maintain. But there would be several additional trees beyond the two trees on our plan that would require removal and then we would have to provide new replacements.
Thank you.
Mr. Dobromilsky, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dan Dobromilsky, landscape architect.
Been sworn in?
Yeah, Dan, I don't think, I don't think you've been sworn in. If you can raise your, do you swear or affirm testimony about to give the truth? I do. So I've 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 reviewed the the Taylor's memo as well as heard the testimony and I think. I appreciate the sentiment, really do appreciate it, but I think we we have. Have to think about building these houses too, that there's going to be disturbance all over the site. And the trees out front, the Norway spruce. Have very shallow root systems. They're notorious for blowover. So you, even if you save them, there's a potential they're going to blow over and hit something. I mean, you're gonna, you're, it really is very risky to do the level of construction you're proposing. And try and keep those trees. I think at best, we would look at one of them, one of the five out front. Pick the one that's the healthiest and try and see is there a way that we can minimize the disturbance around that tree. And I think that's the best you could hope for. And that may involve. Some talk about whether we can shift the driveway slightly. And the sewer lines, there's little SS lines on that image, there's sewer lines. So you're cutting. Three or four feet deep to put those things in. So it's you're severing the roots completely. It it's, you have to think in the winter, this is a huge sail. With foliage that's if we have a high wind and that tree's roots have been compromised, it's coming down. For safety bakes, we really have to think that through. And then when you get to the trees in the back. The one that's furthest away is a Norway maple, which is an invasive species and really not very desirable at all. And then the the one, the 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 upper left of the image. That one would be the one that I would target, say, can we try and figure out a way to save that one? So realistically, I think the one in the back corner, you could think about it. The picking one out front and see is there a way to save it and then the ones along the bottom, the hedgerow on the bottom. That I think is possible. Again, though, but look at all those utilities they're proposing. They're bringing all the utilities in along that corridor. And hoping that you can get all those utilities in the same trench, which is doubtful. It's it's. It's very optimistic to think we're going to save much of anything when it comes to existing trees on this property with the level of development that's taking place. And you're going to have vehicles, all different trades out here, you're going to have excavation. It's going to be really difficult. And and I think you really got to pick one or two trees. And say, these are the ones we're going to try and save and let's try and shift things away from those two trees and then. Just come in with new trees that, you know, for everything else.
Thank you for that sobering. Gut check. Does your memo, I'm sorry that I don't, I even have it highlighted, but I can't find it. What does your member recommend a certain number of trees that you think? Would be appropriate after. Losing the ones you think are. Highly likely to be lost or would become hazard trees if they were. If their roots were compromised. You're on mute.
Sorry. Apologies for that. Yeah, so the, I think what I recommend was an onsite review with Taylor and or myself. And to see if we could really do an analysis of each of the trees that have the potential to be saved. Based upon what the board ultimately agrees upon is, you know, the most sensible configuration for everything. And then then see how can we shift things a little bit here and there as as Mr. Chinlech suggested to try and save them. What options are out there? And then that will then turn into what do you have to put back? And I think Taylor's report. Provided very much detailed information. If if this tree came down, it would be two trees. If this tree came down, it would be three trees, those type of things. And then we'd have to find, you know, locations that the trees could go back and fit and. It's unfortunate, a lot of times you're better off growing a new. Tree rather than trying to save a big old tree. Unfortunately, when you get to this type of small lot with a lot going on. It's it's, we used to try and save these trees and we learned hard that you can't really, it's just not realistic.
Thank you. And and I just want to add at the. Risk of being perceived as wrapping knuckles or something that it was really frustrating to read. From Mr. Dobromilsky and from our arborist, Mr. Sapadar. Not only that the assumptions made about being able to save trees were completely unrealistic, but also that there was. Mistake after mistake on the species of trees. And I would just. You know, note for the record that. I I hope applicants in the future are a lot more careful and usually they are. Because these are, you know, important features of these lots, whether they're old or new. Okay, I'm done with that comment. Any other questions for, or are you finished with your?
Perhaps on on that element, there's a few other pieces I'd like to, Mr. Kamelik, to to hit on. From an engineering perspective, but if there's still other questions on this part of it.
There's at least another question from Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just, it's really a follow up from Dan's. Dobromilsky's testimony about the utilities. And I'm curious whether there is any potential to come with utilities, you know, under the driveway. In the center rather than trying to push them out. Especially on that northern side where where that there's that sort of row of row of trees that might be endangered by that. I guess that's a question for. For Jim.
We can take a look at that. We were trying to avoid, we're going to have to have valves, possibly meters. Near the street, so to keep them out of the stormwater management facilities. We tried to avoid that, but if there's a way that we can. Decrease some of that disturbance and migrate those to the center of the lot, we'll take a look at that.
So it is a little after nine and I want to be. Sensible about taking a break. Mr. Kamelik, do you have? Would you be wrapping up your testimony in five minutes or should we break now and then let you finish?
No, I think so. I think I just wanted to cover. We talked about the the parking and the the egress. We did. Note that we have parking stalls next to each of the dwellings and then additional parking on the back. The width of the driveway at the rear is almost twenty-three feet. In width in order for those vehicles to back out of the garage. And and make their way towards Ewing Street. We also have opportunities for them in several moments to to pull out forward. With the other pullouts, if there's not a vehicle within those parking stalls or with the way that they're depressed. If they prefer to pull out onto Ewing Street. So we did take a look at. You know, turning templates and and things like that for increasing the egress from the lot since we do have. Parking spots in different areas of the site.
And and Jim, similarly, the idea, you know, these are two residential homes and two ADUs rather than kind of a multifamily situation. You, internal pedestrian circulation, you know, people would would essentially kind of use. This as a as a path rather than creating some other kind of sidewalk network, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we were really trying to minimize the amount of impervious coverage, the amount of stormwater management facilities on the lot. So we would anticipate that similar to, you know, other houses that the. The pavement accessway would be used for pedestrian use in and around the buildings.
And then one last question, just and then Madam Chair, we can, we can either. Break or if if the questions go longer, up to you, but just there was a note about. Recycling and trash and others, garages, there's a kind of a little utility room in the front, ideas about where. You know, recycling buckets would be stored by these unit owners.
Yeah, perhaps we did discuss this with Marina, the architect. We have the garage and then for the ADUs, we have. The anticipation would be, it would be behind the ADU or on the side, but not necessarily in the front.
Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Weisman?
I think I want to let Dan go first because I think he may touch on what I'm going to ask about, but.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. I was just wondering if there was any consideration. You identified that there's opportunity for vehicles that are parked in the garage. To turn around in the parking spaces, but. People are going to be living in these homes and those spaces will likely be occupied a significant portion of time. So vehicles that are parked in the garage. To exit the site would have to do so in a full reversing movement. From the furthest end of the site all the way up to Ewing Street. So I was wondering if there's any consideration to provide maybe a small additional turning area. For those cars exiting that the garages to exit in a forward facing movement.
I guess I would say that we can take a look at possibly. Extending near the garage, extending the width. You know, we, we're trying to maintain green space in and around these structures here, but we do have. An aisle at least where the garage is, that's almost twenty, twenty-three feet wide. So our thought was if there was a desire to pull. To pull forward and pull out, that somebody still could make a multi. Turning movement and get themselves turned around in front of the garage before they pulled out and we may be able to. Just widen the driveway slightly in that area to facilitate that. But the the parking stalls. For the individual units that are on the periphery, the the two pair in between the dwellings. They are where the vehicles are parked, they are set back a bit away from the main driveway. Which does give some additional area. So that's what I was speaking to. Especially near the front, there's some some more area, but. A person would, like a typical residential, single family dwelling, be able to. To back up down the driveway and, you know, back back out of a driveway like for a single family dwelling. But we were trying to keep the impervious surfaces as low as we could with these additional pullout areas.
Just so I understand that, you know, in in the situation where there's any one of those spots is unoccupied, there would be a full. Kind of hammerhead opportunity. And then I think I heard you say that even if they were all occupied, there is. Some amount of width there that would allow a multi, multi. A movement that could allow you to turn around. And 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 face out into Ewing without backing all the way.
Yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be a multi-turn, multi-turn movement.
But that would only be necessary if all four of those spaces were fully used.
Yeah, I guess that's number one. And then obviously. We're talking about two of the six spaces here down at the end, right? The other four have complete unobstructed egress access to pull forward and out.
Understandable. I think if there was a chance to look at potentially widening the. Short bottleneck area at that twenty-two foot width in front of the garages. I think that would provide a much easier way rather than a multi-point turn. A little more direct access to to turn around.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, so. I want to. Make some related comments. First of all, I think the circle. That's at the crossroads, if you will, of that driveway, you know, is kind of a nice design feature, but it's. Really quite confusing because I think vehicles would have to be driving half on and half off the special pavement. And I think it would be good to. Sort of redesign that to clarify, you are either all on it or all off of it. I think, you know, if it were enlarged a little. And, you know, you know, that the that the movements that we're concerned about could take place entirely within that circle. You know, that somebody backing out of the garage could back to the circle and the rear end would go one way and then they could just. Go out the other, you know, go forward out the other way.
I was just, I just wanted to point out, just to be clear, it's not a landscape center island.
No, I I get that. I get that, but I, it's still, it's still. It's sending. A confusing message. To people of whether they're supposed to be driving on it or off it, because essentially they have to drive half on and half off. The way it's configured right now. I also, I, you know, if that tree is going to go. Which there seems to be, yeah, that one, some consensus that that's going to be extremely difficult to save. That gives you some more flexibility what you're going to do in this area. But I also want to make the point, you know, I did go back and check the drawing and the impervious coverage limit. On this site is forty-nine point five percent, I think, and the actual impervious coverage on each site. Is forty-nine point five percent. You are right at your impervious limit. And I'm concerned that that is driving some of these decisions in ways that are not advantageous, both. This question of vehicular movements and also the question of pedestrian, um. Circulation, you know, single family homes have driveways, but they still have walkways. You know, to get, to get their doors, and I think that. That it's ungracious here to simply suggest that people have to walk on the driveway. And I think part of the reason, the hidden reason for that is that you would be over your impervious limit. If you, um, if you. Provided that, and so I'm not saying what the answer is, but I wanted to flag that. Um, for the board to understand that that's part of, I think, what's. What's driving the design decisions here.
But just to, just to clarify that for you, David. Um, I think if you look at the cover sheet, you might have seen in the table. It says less than forty-nine point five, but the actual impervious coverage, we are a few percent less.
Okay, I thought.
Than that, so we can take a look at that and see if there's. Opportunities here to widen the driveway for egress, but. I think we're forty-four and change. Forty-four for one and forty-three and change for the other, so we're. There is a little buffer in there.
Okay, I, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess I was looking at the table and didn't zoom in enough. But, um, yeah, I think, you know, I think staff's comments here are right, right on target, both about the pedestrian circulation. And about the automobile movements and I would like to see those solved. Um, not. Not a shrug. Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Bridger? Derek? His hand went down, okay. Um. Uh, this may be heresy, but if the, if there were no garage structure. Would that give you more flexibility? Oh, Derek, you're back with your hand up. I don't wanna jump in, in front of you, but I'm just throwing that out there that if. If not having a garage would provide for more flexibility with regard to parking and turning movements. Um, if you could, uh. You know. Do more with that space than two parking spaces. That's my question. And I guess it, I mean. I don't know whether anybody has any insight to share right this very minute, but, um, and I know it's impervious. Cover either way, assuming it's the same amount of. Um. Space, um. But it would mean, uh, a structure not quite so close to the rear. Lot line and the rear neighbors and I, I thought could potentially, um, provide for more flexibility for turning movements, but. Do you, Mr. Cohen or Mr. Kamelik have any thoughts about that? You can say, no, that does not make sense, Louise. I, I will take no offense.
I think, I think the, the idea is a good one. I'm just looking at it, trying to see. Wh- what we could do back there because. Um, again, you have a parking space and then you have egress from it. Um, and you wanna have them on the separate lots and we're, we're at a, you know. The way everything is organized laterally, uh, it's a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I would say, you know, if the parking for the cars that would have been in the garage. Was not where the garage is, but in front of where the garage is. You could have a significant reduction. In impervious service and if we solve the, the design of that circle. You could still, you know, you could, you could have plenty of room to get out.
Right.
Um, so I think that, I think it's worth. Throwing into the hopper, uh, as part of the problem solving.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Um, Derek Bridger?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to circle back to the fenestration question. I checked my numbers and, um. The, the two doors and the window do comply with the ten percent, um, on the front facade of the ADU, so.
Thanks for checking, Derek.
Thank you for bringing it up, David.
Okay, um, I don't see any other board hands up for. For questions of expert witness right now, so why don't we, it's nine sixteen, why don't we, um, take a break, reconvene at nine twenty-five sharp? And, um. We'll take any, any remaining questions, um, from board members and then open up for public comment after that, okay? See you at nine twenty-five, thanks. From board members. There are any remaining board, uh, board member questions, you could raise your hand now. Um, for now, that is, of course, we can come back. Ask more questions and deliberate, um, based in part on what we hear. In public comment, so. I will open the meeting now for public comment. If you're a member of the public and we have, uh, uh, still seventeen people. In attendance and I'm seeing hands go up. Um. Now is the time to raise your hand and we will call on people in the order in which. Hands were raised. Um. Carrie, can you bring over our first two, the first. Hand up that I can see is a six oh nine phone number ending in eight nine seven two. Um, and the second individual is Michael Bell, if you could bring them over. Um. So for the, um, member of the public who's calling in from the phone, eight nine seven two, um, if you have. A camera that you can activate, um, please do so and if you don't. Then, um.
There's my video.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
Yep.
Um. You can, uh, let Mr. Um. Muller swear you in.
Okay.
Swearing all the members of the public, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Claire Baxter, B A X T E R.
Thank you.
Go right ahead. Claire.
I, I live at four fifty-five Ewing, so if you're looking at the house, it's not the next one on the right, but the, the second one. And, uh, my big thing is the drainage. I have, um. If you look at the street, it goes downhill. And it ends up in my yard and the one thing I know. There are a lot of springs in the area. And it's been more and more when they built about a year and a half ago, they built the two houses above that house. And because it's disturbing the springs and the water is in my yard. And in the back of my yard, that's what I'm really concerned about. It's like a river. Um, the water is unbelievable, the drainage problem I have in my yard. And it's gotten only worse since they built those houses. And the other part of it in the front of the house. I get a tremendous amount of, um, at the edge of my driveway, all of a sudden now, after any rain, there's water draining down the street. And I've noticed in the middle of the street, there's a crack. And there's more water coming out of there. So I'm very concerned about the drainage. And what that's gonna, uh, happen to my house. And I also think there's an awful lot going on, those two lots. There's just, it seems like there's no space for anything. But, um. That's what I have, that's what I, uh, my concern is the drainage. And how it'll affect. Okay?
Yes, thank you. And, uh, after we hear from other members of the public, we will ask, um, the applicant and our professionals to. Speak to the drainage, um. Before and after the proposed, uh. Um. Development of these sites, additional dwellings. Thank you.
And thank you very much for not using your whole three minutes.
I said my point.
Yes, thank you.
I wish everyone would do that.
Um. Uh, m- Mr. Muller, our next, um, speaker is, uh, Michael Bell or maybe. Uh, well, you can introduce yourself. I'm not sure whether I, whether the name on the screen is, is who will speak or not. Um, but Mr. Muller needs to swear you in.
It's Michael Bell and my wife, Jane McCarty.
I'm Jane McCarty.
Right, we'll be sworn in.
Are you both gonna testify? Okay, um, do you both swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth?
We do, yes.
Okay, you're so sworn, please, each of you, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Okay, my name is Michael Bell. B E L L. And we live at one oh three Kyler Road, which is on the corner with Ewing Street. The others, uh, the western side of Ewing Street. And you are?
And I'm Jane McCarty. My last name is McCarty, M C, C A R T Y.
Okay.
Same address.
Right ahead.
Yeah. Well, it was only five months ago in November twenty twenty-three that during lengthy discussion of our new master plan for Princeton. Members of this board said that residents voicing concerns of the likelihood of increased density were overreacting. And reassured us that the plan would not result. Uh, in overdevelopment, uh, until appropriate zoning regulations had been developed. To quote one member, as reported by Planet Princeton. The proposed master plan is not going to open the floodgates to a complete redevelopment of the town. Or the complete tear down of every building in order to build four unit buildings per acre. Instead, what we have here is four buildings on point four four acres. And he said, I think people should calm down a little bit about that. If this proposal is approved by this board, those reassurances will be rendered hollow. The floodgates will be open and the flood will engulf Ewing Street. The greater impervious coverage created by this subdivision of an existing lot is a really serious concern. The existing lot is subject to a limitation on impervious coverage of thirty-six percent, which would be six thousand nine hundred and eleven square feet. By creating two non-conforming undersized lots, the permitted impervious coverage can be up to forty-nine point five percent. Examining the applicant's plans as submitted, the impervious coverage is proposed to be eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet. Adding up what was on their plan, which is an increase of more than two thousand square feet beyond what is now allowable. This is sleight of hand and it should not be permitted. I've heard the zoning board previously reject applicants' requests for variances. On the grounds that the property in question was already a subdivided lot and the original rules should therefore apply. If Princeton is serious about the preservation of open space and stormwater management, the rules applying to the existing single lot should be applied. The construction will almost certainly denude the, the lot of its existing trees, as we heard. Including that row of Norway spruce along Ewing Street, which is a defining feature of the existing streetscape. Any street parking by residents of the development or their guests or services. You, uh, uh, being brought to the houses will impede the flow of traffic along Ewing Street, which has only a fifty-foot right of way. Delivery, municipal service or emergency vehicles already cannot pass oncoming traffic when vehicles are parked on either side of Ewing. Concerning the desirability of creating a walkable neighborhood, the board might note that there is no sidewalk on that side of Ewing Street. And that when the sidewalk on the west side does reach to Hearn Road, there is no sidewalk at all on either side of De Hearn Road in either direction. Jane.
Okay, ca- excuse me, um, uh, Ms. McCarty. Uh, Ian, since we have a second individual, um, and I did give you a little extra time, Mr. Bell, because. We ate in, into your time a little bit after the, um, timer started. Um, Mr. Henderson, if you would start the timer again, um, so that Jane McCarty can have her three minutes too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm concerned about the number of variances, variances that are being requested for this development, this project. In particular, I think the accessory structure, the develop, accessory dwelling unit being put into the front yard. Is wrong. Uh, the, the rules say that no accessory building or structure should be located in any front yard. And the placement of the ADUs in the front of the main houses requires variance. The, this is going to set a precedent. This lot next door would be, could apply for the same thing. That you could expect this to happen all over town. What, what's to prevent any homeowner from putting another? House, an ADU in their front yard, if you cha- make this change, it sets a bad precedent. I think the project. Will start with a mostly cleared lot, especially if more of the trees cannot be saved. And except for working around the trees to be preserved, they should be able to develop. The property with a minimum of variances. And in fact. At the concept plan review. The documents the owner sent in said, apart from the variances needed for the subdivision of the lot. We do not foresee the need for other variances, but here they are, asking for all sorts of other variances. The table parameters has listed the setback from the road. Um, the mi- minimum prevailing front yard setback as. Seventy, is thirty-seven feet and. I think, again, another sleight of hand is being done if you say, oh, you're gonna measure the distance to. Not to the first building you come to, but to the main dwelling, which is further back. It should, if you're gonna measure that, do that measurement. It should be to the first billing, building you come to, in this case, the accessory dwelling unit. We're concerned about the changes to the neighborhood character. We bought our house nearly eight years ago because we liked the neighborhood. And although it has changed some, which we expected. This sub- subdivision development will put four houses where there previously only been one. And that will create increased traffic. More parking on Ewing Street and an increased density in the ha- houses. And I think it'll set a bad precedent, which others will follow.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCarty. Um. Our next, and again, we'll, we will speak to some of the questions that you've raised after we hear the rest of, um, public comment. Um. Who is next up, Ms. Philip?
That would be, uh, Michael, I'm sorry, I thought I moved somebody over already, K then.
We did, yeah.
K ten X, sorry, and then Michael Floyd.
Okay.
Hi, it's, uh, Katerina Teneyk.
Yeah, if you could raise, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth?
Uh, sure, yes.
So sworn or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name.
Katerina Teneyk, T E N E Y C K.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so unfortunately, I, um, as some of the other neighbors do not support the idea. I understand the applicants want to take advantage of the ADA, um, ADU rule and build. Four houses instead of two, uh, which, uh, this is exactly what's happening, it's four separate dwelling units. Um. The reason why I don't support it is because I feel like it looks like a condo development, it doesn't have the look of the single family home. It looks like four separate houses, something like a, you know, a town, townhouse community. And this is not what this neighborhood is about. And I feel like, um, the applicant is comparing, uh, their lot, which is oversized to existing lots that are undersized. But they don't see that the homes are smaller because back in the day, we didn't need larger homes, we were fine with smaller homes. So now what they're doing, they want, uh, the best of both worlds, they want a small lot and then they maximize everything. Everything is absolutely maxed out. There's a lot going on, there will be small patios, no ba- no backyard, literally no grass. Um. Yeah, I just feel like it's not a good fit and I understand we have this ADU, uh, rule, but. It doesn't seem like a good fit for this neighborhood and then at the same time, the neighbor next. And then at the same time, the neighbor next to them that has an oversized lot, they will probably do the same thing. So then we will have eight homes and then maybe 12. So this will slowly become a very, very dense street. So unfortunately, do not love it. And then if they, I have another minute. If, you know, the board does decide to, to grant the subdivision for the two lots, at least I think that the applicant should reverse the ADU and the main house just so we see the main house and then the ADU in the back. Because essentially, that's what the accessible dwelling unit is. It's the small apartment or a smaller home in the back of the property. So we see the main house in the front and then the ADU in the back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Michael Floyd and then Felicia Spitz.
Michael, if you could raise your right hand. Are you here?
No.
And you?
You just need to activate, activate your, your camera, Mr. Floyd.
Why is it? It's not activating. Start video. No. Can you see?
Yes.
You could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Let's one affirm. Please state your full names, spell your last name.
Michael Floyd, F L O Y D.
Thank you.
I had a couple comments. This is all very interesting and we're all learning some new things as we go along all the time. My concerns are about precedent and neighborhood impact. I am glad that the last two speakers did touch on a point that I hadn't heard discussed, which is that adjacent lot to the north is the exact same size and essentially a parallelogram too. And does seem, you know, ripe for redevelopment in the same way. But that may be, in the future, it may not be. So that's related to precedent. Also, putting the ADU in the front and the large one in the back, I'm just not sure about it. Normally, we look at, you know, air and open space and preservation. And we kind of look at it, or I kind of looked at it as usually the rear yard and not cutting into that. Now, whether you put the larger building in the front or the back, they're still the same size, the ADU's same size of the ADU, so it won't have an impact that way, but it will impact the rear yards. Lastly, I just noted in the staff memo, which I think was also consistent with something David Cohen said today, is you have some powers to negotiate. We'll see where this goes. I know the town planner mentioned that in his recommendations that planning board members could or should ask basically the applicant why they're going to the maximum permitted in some areas. I believe that's in his memo. And I haven't heard anybody ask that, or maybe the maximum permitted doesn't have to be the minimum that they ask for, and they could ask for a little bit less, whether it be a height, if they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, the next person is Felicia Spitz and then Dale Mead.
Okay.
Felicia, if you could raise your right hand.
The host stopped my video, so.
Oh.
There we go.
If you could raise your right hand.
Yep.
You swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So this one. And again, your name, Felicia Spitz, S P I T C?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanted to applaud the Iodelli family for this really creative and innovative solution. We hear a lot of talk about the missing middle housing and you're providing at least two with this plan to our town, which I personally am grateful for because there isn't a lot of inventory. I've heard a lot about the ADU in the front yard and it strikes me as ironic because if you're walking by on the street, having the smaller unit in the front would make the whole project seem more in, in line with the scale of the existing structures. So personally, I think it's kind of silly that there's some thought that an ADU can only be in the back. I mean, it actually visually seems like it would be much more appealing and fit better in the neighborhood to have the smaller structure in the front because that's what would catch your eye. And I don't know that you'd see the larger structure behind it from a, from a street view. So if, you know, that, that's up for discussion tonight, I would encourage members of the board to really think about what helps this type of cottage structure work within a neighborhood that's comprised of smaller homes. The other thing I want to address are the trees because I heard something different maybe than what other people heard and that was that some of the existing trees, while they are larger, they are diseased and invasive species. So I know we all get very upset about losing trees here, but I'd also like to point out, this is a great opportunity to introduce non-invasive species trees that are healthy and that aren't going to create problems with, you know, Emerald Ash beetles or whatever other blights are going around town these days. So in support of missing middle housing, replacing some invasive trees with better ones and really looking at this from what, what stays in the kind of size and scale of the neighborhood with the ADUs in the front yard, I think this is an amazing solution and the fact that a family is doing this and not a developer, I just think it's, it's a, it's a tremendous creative vision and I, I hope that you consider it in, in that context. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mead? Jerry, can you swear in Dale Mead, please?
If you could raise your right hand, Dale, are you here?
He is. You did turn your mute back on, Mr. Mead. You were unmuted for just a split second. There you go. Okay.
Here I am. Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So this one affirm. Please state your full name, spell your last name.
Dale Meade, M E A D E. And I would like to make a few comments about some of the slides shown at the beginning of the presentation. In particular, the plot showing various lots, some of minimum size compared to the present proposed re-subdivision. And on that plot, many of the lots did have indeed non-conforming characteristics. But I believe nearly all of them were that way as of the time zoning was introduced. So none were made non-conforming by a subdivision process. And it's been argued that because they were the same size and so on and had non-conformist issues, that the existing proposal of subdividing 469 Ewing to create these two non-conforming lots would themselves be consistent with the neighborhood character. But I believe also, if you look at those lots on that figure and all the lots within the 200-foot radius of 469 Ewing, I don't believe any have ADUs. So this is the crux of the problem here. The claim is that there's no substantive change to the neighborhood character, whereas in fact, you're doubling the size of the occupancy allowed on this neighborhood by allowing both of the two subdivided, non-conforming lots to have both a main house and a ADU and in the process, still struggling like to make the ends meet by requiring all these variances to be made. I'm also recalling the statements made during the last few minutes of the various planning board meetings on the master plan. And that was that relax, nothing is going to happen. It's going to take a while. Could be a long time before the council enacts ordinances to affect this redensification or the densification of the residential neighborhoods. And now it looks like this is a process in place at the moment that is going to end run the council's authority. And it really sounds an awful lot like the Humbert case, that you're walking down the same path and haven't gotten the message yet from Judge Lowery. So those are my comments. And again, I think this is trying to put 40 pounds in a 20-pound bag. It just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. I think I saw you brought over Joe Butler.
That is correct.
Great. So, Mr. Muller, can you swear in Ms. Butler?
Is Joe, can you raise your right hand?
Got it.
Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Joe Butler, B U T L E R. I guess I'm going to piggyback on Dale's comment a little bit. You know, Princeton is blessed with a lot of non-conforming lots. But why the planning board would want to create more non-conforming lots, I think is a bad precedent that it just, while the architect was able to show a lot of properties in that neighborhood that aren't, that are smaller, or this would be about the same size, there are also a lot of properties in that neighborhood that aren't. And I think that the more often you create non-conforming lots, the harder it makes when the next applicant comes in to say, to deny them the opportunity to also create more non-conforming lots. And then we might as well just be zoning lot by lot. A comment about having the ADUs in front, having that parking spot right in front, I think is pretty unattractive if eventually you ever have sidewalks and you do have people walking around or just driving down the street. It starts to look like just parking lots. They're not allowed in the former borough. Not that this is the former borough, it's the township. But my real question, Justin, if you're still on here, is about in your memo, item G, you said that the traffic would increase by 20 cars. And I'm wondering if you can explain that a little bit. Are you going from two drivers to six drivers? So there are four additional drivers, five trips a day, so 20. And when you say that it's not a big deal if everybody on the street did it, when does it become impactful, I guess? That's my question. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. So before we address that question, I just want to invite anybody else who wishes to speak to raise your hand. Okay, I see Paul Wahlberg's hand go up. Anybody else? This is last call. If you want to speak. Okay, so we'll bring over Mr. Wahlberg and after that, we'll close public comment. Mr. Wahlberg, will you, thank you, unmute yourself and activate your camera. You're a step ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Muller.
If you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
You swear or affirm testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So this one affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Paul Bendix Wahlberg, P A U L B E N D I K S W A L B E R G. Thank you.
Right ahead.
Okay, so I apologize for reading. I'm trying to stand at the time limit. I'm very, I've been very concerned about all of this because this is taking place about approximately 240 feet away from me. I live at 393 Walnut Lane. I and others are opposed to splitting this property into two non-conforming units. And that really is the focus here. I repeat, it's splitting the property, not all the other variances that is the issue. We're opposed because splitting the property into non-conforming lots is against regulations and allows building four houses where there originally one. That is the basic issue. You're trying to squeeze four families into a reasonably sized lot, consistent with all the lots on my street, where there was originally only one. In last year's meeting, I hate to, I hate to be bringing this up again, but the board controversially approved the first master plan and I heard the same thing that others did, that we weren't going to be seeing this at least for a while until it could be considered later on. Calm down. Is that really true? Because as everyone said, if you approve this subdivision, and again, I'm talking about the subdivision, not the variances, the fundamental issue. If you're doing this, you are de facto changing zoning regulations through the back door and without the attention of the wider Princeton community. In considering variance requests, I believe the planning board has a responsibility to serve the interests of the neighborhoods that will be affected, not their own personal interests and beliefs regarding how development should be pursued or those of developers, realtors, or other professionals to stand to benefit monetarily or professionally from this subdivision and all the subdivisions that will surely follow. One street over, we have many properties that are over .44 acres, so they're all presumably now available too, including mine, which is .49 acres. I have another point related to the effect of this development on the environment. I have a master's degree in environmental conservation from Yale, a PhD in ecology and evolutionary biology from Rutgers. I've worked with reputable national and international environmental organizations over my career. And with all due respect, increasing density from one family to four and putting four units in to accommodate that, as presented in this proposal, is going to damage the environment in Princeton, in Princeton, and it is not hard to prove this. Any suggestion that aggressive development proposals such as this one, increasing families from one to four in the same half-acre space, suggesting they are in any way environmental, benefiting the environment, is misleading at best and dishonest at worst. Trees will suffer, impermeable surfaces will increase, that will increase runoff, it will reduce the recharge of aquifers. The neighbors will see ponds developing in their yard, but even more water will be rushing down the streets and into the, into the sewer lines and brushed out to the ocean. Any pre-existing natural habitat will decline. Just go look at the two massive new developments that have been set up, not only around the shopping center, but also nearby, and you see that all the trees disappear. This development and others like it are undoubtedly being, that are undoubtedly being planned, will be highly detrimental to the environment of Princeton. The law may grant planning boards the ability to approve aggressive development, not in accordance with zoning regulations, out of character with the rest of homes in the neighborhood and in opposition to the express request of the residents. But I don't know if it really, really does, but if it does, I believe it shouldn't. I doubt such using, I doubt using a power
You've used your tongue.
was the mandate that voters of Princeton intended to give you guys when they voted for the mayors that appointed you. And I didn't ask for it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so with that, we will close public comment. There are several questions raised that I think should be addressed. Claire Baxter raised a question about drainage and so I, Mr. Cohen, do you have a comment or question first? You're on mute.
Not first. I just, I do have a response to one of the, one of the commenters. But you can go ahead and ask Dan or whoever to address the drainage thing first.
Yeah, if Mr. Kamelik and Mr. Weissman could speak to impervious cover and drainage on the property as it exists now versus
Sure.
What it's engineered to manage in the way of stormwater, David?
Yeah, and actually, I, I realized that what I wanted to say is going to feed into this, which is, I thought that Michael Bell's comment that only by being non-conforming do these lots have the 49% impervious limit. If they were actually conforming in the zone at .25 acres, they would have a 36% impervious coverage limit. And I think, you know, we already discussed the fact that FAR, we shouldn't be giving an FAR bonus because we're giving a variance. And I think Michael Bell's point was a really good one, that maybe we shouldn't be considering giving an impervious coverage. uh, uh, an impervious coverage, um, break on the basis of, of the, of the substandard, uh, lots. So, you know, Jim and Ryan, if you want to talk about that in the same bucket of talking about impervious coverage and drainage.
Sure. I, I guess the two points that I wanted to make is one, obviously, uh, whether this project move for, moves forward or doesn't move forward, um, any, any existing offsite drainage issues on other properties, you know, obviously, that's, that's a preexisting condition that, um, this project doesn't necessarily affect, um, as it's, as it's currently happening now. But I, what I would add to it is to say that, um, we are managing all of the increase in runoff from the property, number one, in accordance with the municipal requirements and the standards. And number two, we are conveying, um, areas on the property, uh, especially along the frontage and, and managing water that previously did drain onto the adjacent property. We put a cutoff swale on the downhill side in order to help to convey that water that ultimately drained across the front yard um, onto our property and then down on the, um, this, on the north side of the property as well. So there will be some improvements there with the rain gardens and the bio retention areas that we have in the front yard.
Thank you for that. Dan, do you have anything to add?
Uh, it, it just, if you'd like me to speak to the ordinance and what the requirements are, just, just for public knowledge. Um, so the municipality, uh, has, uh, stricter limits as it relates to stormwater management on sites um, than the DEP does. Uh, the DEP sets limit at, limits at one acre of land disturbance and a quarter acre of impervious coverage creation. Uh, the municipality has lowered those limits to a half acre and five thousand square feet. Additionally, uh, the municipality, uh, requires onsite stormwater management for what are considered small projects such as these, which increase impervious coverage on sites, uh, by four hundred square feet or greater. Those projects are required to, uh, account for stormwater management in that they retain, uh, what's the equivalent of the water quality design storm, one point two five inches of rain. Um, and they are also required to manage, uh, onsite through that same stormwater management, uh, the two-year storm, uh, which is three point three inches of rain.
Um, over what time period? One hour, two hours?
The water quality design storm is, is on what would be a major project would be, uh, a two-hour storm. Um, the two-year storm would be a, a twenty-four hour storm. Um, but the small project limitation doesn't get into the timeframe limits. It, it just sets it for the total rainfall amount. Uh, so, so that retention amount is regardless of, of timeframe of when it falls. Um, and each stormwater management system has to be designed uh, per the New Jersey, uh, DEP's best managed practices manual, BMP manual. Um, and there's a, a restriction as to the, um, which stormwater management measures can be used.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question of, of Derek and, and Dan?
Yeah, yes.
Can you explain if it's true, why the impervious cover percentage is so much higher for nonconforming lots than conforming lots?
It does not relate to conforming or nonconforming. The impervious coverage limit is dictated based off of the size of the lot. Um, so the, the range from, I think it's point one acres to point two four nine acres is, is, uh, forty-nine and a half percent, and then from point two five acres to point, essentially point five acres, uh, is that thirty-six percent.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Anything to add to that, Mr. Bridger?
No, leave it to the engineer.
Um, Dan, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is it accurate to say that the stormwater management? And I understand what people have said about the intensity of what's proposed, um, and, and in fact, um, they're correct in pointing out that one or two people that, um, are professionals raised this question, um, in their memos. Um, um, but given that, or, you know, even given that, is it accurate to say that that it's likely that there's less stormwater running off of the site, um, after what's proposed than there is now, or is that not a safe assumption?
Uh, I, it, it, it would depend on the contributory area that's fed to each stormwater management measure. Um, it, it, at a minimum, it would have to remain the same. Um, the contributory area to each stormwater management measure would have to treat at least the minimum of what the, the new impervious surface is. So if it's twenty eight hundred square feet of new impervious, then twenty eight hundred square feet has to be treated.
Uh huh. Okay. Mr. Cohen, I see you
Yeah.
leaning forward and thus I
I'm leaning in. I'm not leaning forward, I'm leaning
Leaning in, okay.
So, I, I want to make a couple of points about this. First of all, um, if this were a vacant lot and this were new construction, you know, it would be, the, all of the impervious coverage would need to be managed. And the fact is that the existing impervence covered, coverage is not, is not managed currently. You know, I've been trying to reach a point where we can actually regulate both new and redeveloped impervious coverage because, you know, I think like an architect, um, if you tear down a house and you build a new one, you're not allowed to build the new one not up to code.
Right.
Just because the old house wasn't up to code doesn't mean that you can build a new one that's not up to code. And here, we're saying tear down all the impervious coverage that's there now and build it all new, but you don't have to manage half of it because it didn't use to be managed. To me, that doesn't really make sense, and I think that there's an opportunity here to sort of say, look, you know, you're, you're asking for all these variances. And we can talk about that later, you know, the different variances and how they should be treated. But at the, at the least, I sort of feel like one of the things I would like to negotiate with the applicant, if it's possible, is to say, you know, really, especially in a neighborhood like this that is having trouble with storms and, and water, uh, flooding neighbor, you know, flooding the neighborhood, that we should be setting a higher bar than just what our ordinance calls for if we can. So that's the, that's the comment I wanted to make. And that that actually takes, has two different pieces to it. One is to say, manage all the impervious coverage, not just the new impervious coverage, but it also comes into question as to whether then it becomes a large project, which has more stringent management requirements than just managing the, um, the two-year storm or the water quality storm. And so, so it could be that we're, if we ask this, we're, we're asking them to manage more impervious and we're asking them to manage at a higher, um, uh, sort of a hi- higher performance, uh, standard. And I would like to put that out there as something that would be reasonable under the circumstances. And I don't know if it's, it, it may be reasonable, but not realistic, but I'd like for somebody to respond to whether it's realistic, because I think it is reasonable.
And if it's realistic with, um, smaller dwellings.
Well, when I say realistic, I mean, do you have enough space on the site to manage all, to manage all that stormwater at this high, um, high performance level?
Mr. Kamelik, can you speak to that?
Well, I don't know that I'm in a position to speak to specifics about quantifying how much additional water can be stored, but I would just say that the area, the additional areas are limited on this site. Um, as you can see with the rain garden areas in the front, where we have those existing footprints plus the remaining yard areas on the property. So we're not in a position where we have expansive backyards and, you know, um, additional space uh, at our discretion in order to just, to, to increase these substantially. So, um, I wish I could give you an answer on that and even quantify, well, how much more could you do? But I just would say that, you know, the available area is limited, number one. Uh, and number two, we are dealing with existing conditions of the topography because the site is somewhat sloping north to south. So that does also play into, um, where are the available pockets that I can put, manage the water? And then how do we get it to that location? Uh, because it's the topography. So there are some, some engineering, you know, constraints here, which, which have a limitation on how much more we could do. Um, I'd like to
Point to points that were, I'm sorry to interrupt, please continue.
No, I just wanted to say, it'd be nice that if I could give you some sort of, you know, quantified additional amount, um, that's something that we can look at, but, you know, in terms of the overall footprint that we're dealing with and available areas, I do think we can look at the front portion of the driveway and the two parking areas in terms of, uh, capacity with pervious pavement. Um, and that could increase our volumetric storage beyond that, that we have currently. So I think that that's reasonable um, to say to sort of up the bar beyond what's on the plan. Um, but I just don't want to over promise and under deliver because of the constraints that we're dealing with here. And we're trying to make room around the trees and, and kind of find, find some more space, et cetera, so.
Well, pervious pavement was where I was going, so I'm glad you went there too. Uh, Mr. Weissman?
Uh, the constraints uh, towards the front of the site versus the rear of the site, is that because of the basements in the main dwellings at the rear?
In terms of the pervious pavement, yeah, that's, that, that's a concern. Um, and that's why we would be focused near, in and around the ADUs and the front entry drive so that we have some separation with that.
Mr. Bodakammer?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanted to, I guess, first off, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the, the, to the points that, um, Mr. Cohen was making, uh, about the need to, uh, address runoff and about what you compare uh, this project to and comparing it to what you could do as of right, or what you'd have to do and what performance standards you'd have as, as of right, makes sense to me. Um, and I also think that, you know, we should just continue to keep that comparison of this, you know, this proposal to what could be done as of right, particularly with regard to the, this notion of, of changing the character of the community. I mean, I, 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 you can't tell me that leaving the exist, the, the, that, that that the development, the projects that I see on Grover, when I walk to the shopping center for my home in the, in the Littlebrook neighborhood, or when I go visit friends on Harris. I mean, throughout the town, the changes that have been made fundamentally change the character of the neighborhoods. That's, that's, that's what will happen. That, that, that's, that's, that's the base case. That's what you have to compare everything to. Um, and, you know, the question is whether it's better to have that or better to have, uh, a redevelopment project that I think is, as the public commenter Ms. Biz argued, was, you know, contributed to a town that is more economically diverse than what the existing zoning and redevelopment, uh, allows. Um, but as I said, if we're comparing to that, I think we really should compare, uh, you know, we should be, uh, continuing to make the argument that this would be better than, and better than on the stormwater management perspective is, uh, the right. You know, I think, I think we can't lose sight of that. I think we have to think about those impacts on neighbors. That's really, that's really critically important. Uh, as far as, look, I'm, I, I don't mean to get heated about this, but you cannot tell me that it's disingenuous to make an environmental argument regarding tree cover environmental impact related to density. Uh, to say, to suggest that that is, that there's any kind of disingenuousness about that. Uh, all respect to the credentials of the member of the public who testified, uh, you cannot argue from a sing, the impacts on a, on the lot level or a neighborhood level compared to a system level. And I would really expect someone to be thinking about the system level impacts of environmental system level impacts that result from systemically allowing large let development at the expense of smaller lot development. And I'm just going to say, you can have an argument about it, but to suggest that something else is a disingenuous argument is, is frankly offensive. And when I see the damage to the tree cover and tree canopy that results from the large, you know, from, from the, from the large redevelopment, large lot redevelopment projects or the, or the, the, the mansion redevelopments, I mean, people let that slide in this town, but God forbid you talk about a project like this and all of a sudden, you know, uh, enough said, but.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Nat, could you clarify on Grover and Harris?
I just mean, I, I just mean that there are.
Did you mean that the lots that have been redeveloped and a, and a larger structure was put on them?
Yes, that is, I'm sorry that I was not specific and clear, but yes, there are, there are modest homes that date back decades that have been replaced by extremely large scale homes that, you know, to my eye are out of character. They change the character of, of, of the community, um, visually, um, and economically. And, uh, and I see that throughout the town wherever I walk. And, um, you know, I think it's a matter of perspective, whether that's changing the character of community or whether, you know, having more houses in a given area is changing the character of community, but preserving the economic profile of the community. Um, oh, you know, I think one is less of an impact, that was less of a change of character than the other, but uh, I, I just want to make the point that there's not just one definition of changing character.
Yeah, and, and that as of right, a very, very large home that would be very much out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, at least as it's been testified to and as we've seen, um, on maps and such, uh, could be built. Um, so I would like to, um, to speak to the, um, to the phrase sleight of hand, which was raised by a, a few, um, or maybe two or three people who testified, um, uh, and, um, maybe I shouldn't have repeated the phrase, but the, but the, the point being, um, that we're somehow, uh, being asked to back into a, um, allowing something that, um, the master plan or testimony from, um, um, board members and professionals during master plan deliberations, um, you know, promised would not happen. So, um, I think that's a mistaken notion, at least, um, as regards to, uh, you know, the impact of, of the subdivision and whatnot, but I would ask maybe Mr. Lesko and, um, any of the applicants, um, experts to, to talk about that a little bit.
Uh, sure, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm happy to begin with, um, where to start? So I, I think in those conversations about the master plan, I was very clear that if we are going to be changing zoning, uh, we need to do analysis, we need to go through the whole, uh, process, um, with public outreach, with the introduction, the planning board review. With public outreach, with the introduction, the planning board review, uh so on and so forth. Probably an even further process, um you know, like we went even further with the master plan to to hear more voices. On the other hand, this application is a subdivision application. First and foremost, from one line to two, uh you know, one conforming one into two nonconforming ones. We hear these. Prior to this most recent master plan, you know, multiple times a year. I don't think, I mean, even the um the concept review was December of twenty twenty two. I think I got that wrong before, um almost a full year before the the new master plan was adopted. So I don't, you know, if the suggestion is this is an end around way to. Implement the, you know, the the perceived zoning changes in the master plan. Uh, I just don't think that's the case. Um. Now on to the ma- the master plan analysis in and of itself uh within my document. Or wi- within the report that I gave, you know, this isn't a slam dunk. This isn't something that. It, you know, the master plan says, yes, do this, we want this all over. Um, this is, you know, there are. There are two sides to it, uh as I described earlier uh in my introduction. You know, the master plan does say growth in places like the shopping center, but it also says. To uh respect uh the the fabric in the existing neighborhoods, uh as I stated earlier. And you know, sometimes there are applications where. It's so clear that, you know, something is that slam dunk. There hardly even needs to be testimony. Other times there are the ones where there are nuance and and there needs to be testimony. Um, and I, this is, you know, one of those ones that. There needs to be testimony against uh. What the master plan says, uh or or I shouldn't say against, but you know, in line with the master plan says. In line with the municipal land use law, uh and that's what needs to be considered. Uh, frankly, I haven't heard the strongest case so far um to support approving those variances. But, you know, anyway, just back to your original question. You know, I. The insinuation that this master plan paved the way for this or paved the way for this to get around all the things that were said. Uh, I just don't think that's the case.
Um, thank you, Justin. Um, Julie Capizoli and then David Cohen.
Thank you. Um, I think it would be helpful to know again what. The scenarios are. So. If we did. Uh, approve a subdivision, but did not approve any kind of. Um, configuration. How much could be built? Like, could they actually build the same thing on that we're seeing? On each lot, but we would just not have input. Like, and then. Again, if they did not subdivide the lot, how many square foot would they be allowed to build on and how much? Coverage would happen there? So I don't know if Justin wants to take that or Derek.
Certainly, um, so I I think as was testified earlier, uh you know, one single, one single home could be built there. Of about four thousand, five thousand square feet. You would notice the difference between that and the eight hundred square foot house next to it. One other option would be to have the house in the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, generally, the number for accessory dwelling units that we often come to is eight hundred square feet. Uh, there's also uh. An allowance for twenty five percent of the size of the single family house. So if a big single family house could be built, a bigger accessory dwelling unit could also, you know, could be built. Um, within the bulk uh requirements as have been discussed tonight, like impervious coverage. Uh, so I think that was testified at about thirty eight hundred square foot house, twelve hundred square foot ADU. So those are the things that could happen and. Either in either of those cases, the board, any board would not. See that application, it would just. You know, they'd come in for their building permits, their zoning permit. They'd start building that. And that those might be the kind of houses that I think Nat uh. You know, might have been referring to that. You walk around, you see a construction site, six months later, you see a a much bigger house. The other options. With the subdivision of land. Uh, it's really not like there's one. Option, you know, we've seen one thing here. Um, the closest to a buy right would be a house in the front. And an ADU probably no more than eight hundred square feet in the back. Um, but that's really not necessarily a buy right situation. Because the variance is being requested uh to split up the lot. So that's where those conditions or or the negotiation could come in. Um, and it does not need to be maxed out based on the lot, obviously not being maxed out. I think uh, I forgot what I said earlier, but it's a difference of maybe twelve percent. Of the size, so conditions could be put on that. Um, and then obviously we're seeing the the situation tonight where variances are requested to put the houses in the rear. You know, with the variances i- if they were approved the way they are uh and at the size they are. So I I hope that kind of helped.
Yeah, that helps a lot. Thank you.
David Cohen and then Owen.
Yeah, I I did want to start to talk a little bit about the placement of the ADUs in front um and. I I had originally supported that notion when. When the concept review came, I do think that I'm I'm leaning in the other direction at this point. I think that. And it's not just because of the public testimony, although I I heard several members of the public. Sort of say that they would prefer to have the primary dwelling in front and the ADU in back. I think. One reason, and I think this goes to what the members of the public talked about, is that it becomes clear that it's four houses. When the little house is in front, because you can't see the bigger house in the rear. Um, whereas if the bigger house is in front and the little house is in the rear. Um, from a neighborhood character feeling like it's just two houses is a lot more achievable. Um, and the the second piece of my. Evolution in my thinking is that there has been a fair amount of redevelopment of Ewing Street where the little houses have already come down. And been replaced by quite large houses. So I think this idea of having this the smaller structures in front to maintain. The character of the streetscape. It's the the horse is sort of already out of the barn on that. And and. And so I think there are there are good reasons for having the accessory structure in the rear. And uh I think the positives of having the smaller structures in front. Are. Are no longer that compelling to me, and I think I would, I would support. Actually reversing it and getting rid of those variances. That's my feeling currently.
I agree with that. Um, Owen O'Donnell and then Alvin McGowan.
For about the third time this evening, David has anticipated exactly. So, um, my my main question though is. Doesn't the ordinance accord, as far as I understand, says that the ADUs have to be behind the main building? And isn't this exactly how we got into trouble with another? Another application where he decided that the ordinance. Didn't really say what the ordinance actually said.
I don't think it's exactly like, but I mean, I take your point.
I think there's.
I think it's. You know, different and important ways, but perception wise. Uh, point taken, yeah.
But um, but there is a lot here that I do. Do like, and I actually do like the concept of the ADUs in front, but I don't think that we. Really should. Go down that road and tempt fate.
Or maybe invite council to noodle over whether it. Um, you know, not before this complication. Dealt with one way or the other, but at some point in the future, the circumstances under which ADUs in front would be allowed or preferable or. Or something, I'm not, I don't mean to make work for council, goodness knows they have enough on their plate, but. Um, but yeah, take your point, yeah. Thanks, Owen. Um, Alvin?
I like the idea. Let's kick it to council. Let them, let them take responsibility. If it goes bad, hey, we could always blend counsel, you know? I I I guess. Sort of my focus. Is again, is on this that this evolution, as I see it of 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 the ADUs, I mean. Until there was the ordinance. There was, you could only have one ADU, I believe, on. On on the property. And it had to be attached. To the main building. Now we passed the ordinance and it's changed, we passed the ordinance. And some things have been modified. For another thing, it's been modified is there's no longer a requirement. That the ADU and the main building be be attached, they they can be totally separate. I also don't think that. The owner of the ADU any longer has to live. On on the property. So again, you 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 have you have that. Back to to the, you know, the issue of one ADU on on a property. Well, you know. This is interesting because you subdivide the property. And then you get. An AD, you can have. Two separate buildings and two separate ADUs. There seems to be, I'm I'm just concerned, there seems to be this expansion. That's sort of that's going on onto it, onto a statute that's reg- relatively, relatively new and what we're working out. And I guess that. That sort of is my concern. What, you know, you know, is uh is the reason for the ADU just totally arbitrary or was there some? You know, generally, or was 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 there really some reason why? Why it was left the way it was with 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 the um with the ADU in the rear? And the main in the main in the main um. Building in in front, if you will. And if it is, if if Jerry or someone could could speak to that, that. That also would be sort of health, because I'm still. You know. I'm still going back and forth over just over the maintained reason and that and then what's going to go come down to is. If we decide to subdivide. Should, you know. Should the variances be granted here? Should we, should we now, you know, now stretch again? That, you know, the meeting or the the an exception to the ordinance here. Should, well, yeah, to to should, you know, should it be to that? Is is that a particularly wise thing to do? So that if hopefully you understand where I'm coming. That's that's my comment, my concern.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mia's hand went up, so I I'm. Guessing that she might be responding at least in part to. Uh, a question that you raised. Am I right, Mia? Or do you have something else?
Yeah, I I just, I was just gonna say, Alvin, um, you know, the ADU ordinance. Um, while technically new, it was really about harmonizing what had been, um, we had a a flat. In the, I think in the former township, it was called the the flat ordinance and in the former borough, it was a secondary dwelling. Um, if I remember correctly, in one, it had to be. Attached, I think it was the the township and and in the borough, it could be detached. I I can't remember exactly, but you know, the the we we have had. Sorry, David, did you wanna?
No, I finished what you're saying, just one or two little things I wanna.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, um, I, you know, the, so, I mean, as as you know, we we've we've had Princeton was. Uh, was a forerunner and we we have had some form of ADU for for many decades. Um, and and the ADU ordinance was just harmonizing so that in the in the borough and the township, there was some consistency of. Of regulation and also bringing it. Uh, into consistency with what the AARP had recommended as a model ordinance and in addition, um. The, you know, was considered to be unconstitutional to regulate. Who could inhabit it and that, you know, had 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 to do with. The uh owner occupancy, but I I mean, I don't want to get into all of that, the the point being to to specifically answer your question. The idea of having the the provision for having the ADU in back was to maintain. The consistency of streetscape and neighborhood character to 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 David's point. Because there has been already substantial eradication of the character of these neighborhoods with the tear downs and McMansions. It's hard to say if 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 you have the larger house in front, is that more consistent with the newer streetscape on streets? In which there has been that substantial erosion. Um, having the smaller, uh, if you had the ADU in front, that might be more consistent with with what was typically. The smaller uh structures uh that were traditionally the the case in these neighborhoods. Um, and just to to, um, so. You know, I don't have an answer there. It's just, you know, could go either way, but just stepping back for a minute. In um. In terms of, you know, the the master plan issue and and um, you know, this does, this application long predates the master plan. And uh, you know, certainly the 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 master plan does talk about. Ways to maintain the character of neighborhoods that have long had smaller. Structures that. Were uh more accessible from a price point for families of. Lesser means and I'm 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 speaking very relatively. Um, and uh. I'm not sure. That we will, you know, I think for this application, we really need to be looking at. What Jerry will um articulate for us when when we get farther along, which is um in granting, looking at the variances and and do the. Looking at the the potential detriments, and I think we can listen to the to the neighbors um versus the benefits. I I think overall where we are going with these neighborhoods, our choices. For better or worse, are are we don't have the option to preserve exactly what was and to Nat's point. The question is, um, is there any way to prevent the wholesale? Um, McMansionization of what were traditionally middle class neighborhoods in Princeton. And that is, you know, what we have been struggling with for for a very long time. With the neighborhood character initiative with, you know, trying to prevent the the tear downs and and McMansions and this is. One. Uh, way that has been proposed by the applicant to um. You know, create some alternative, which is more smaller structures. Nevertheless, we have to grapple as a planning board whether this particular proposal. In its essence. It will result in more detriments than more more benefits. Um, and I'm. I um. Look forward to to to, you know, hearing my my colleagues and and the board attorney and the planner's opinion. I think Justin has has been. Has opined on that already, but um. Anyway, that's it, that's what.
Thank you. Thanks, Mia. David?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say a word or two more about. Um, the placement of the ADUs. Um, I really think it was. You know, in the former borough. The supplement or the secondary dwellings were intended to not. Detract from the single family. Character of the neighborhoods they existed in. That's why they were required to be in back. That's why you're required not to have the door facing the street. And so if you go through the former borough and you look. At where there were secondary dwellings, you know, they were a little carriage house way in the back. Sometimes they were part of the main structure, but the door was, you know, there was a wraparound porch and the door was. To the side and it wasn't visible from the street and it was all about keeping this sort of single family character. What it was in the township was virtually the the opposite. It was like you were encouraged. It was like an ersatz. Two family house. Where the flat was supposed to be facing the street, they were, you know, almost always. Uh, attached side by side and two family structures weren't allowed in the township, but they were in the borough, so. The borough didn't need a. So the borough didn't need a fake two-family dwelling. They allowed two-family dwellings, but the, the township sort of needed. Uh, to provide for that. So I think that's the reason for the difference between the two. And in the effort to preserve neighborhood character, as Mia said, the consultant who helped. Draft who, who was, who helped draft the AD ordinance, it was the same consultant who drafted the neighborhood character. Section of our code. He was, he sort of came down on the side of the borough. Physical characteristics of the ADUs to embrace that idea of, you know, people like their single-family neighborhoods. And let's keep them looking like single-family neighborhoods, even though we're allowing more families. To be located in them. At least that's my sense of how things got written the way they were. So that goes back to my point of, you know, why I'm now preferring to keep the ADU in back. Is, you know, I'm. I think that's more in the spirit of the way the ordinance was written and that. In this case, the benefit of going against the ordinance is. Is minimal, um, because of the way the character of the neighborhood has already changed. I did also want to just say. One thing to those who've been commenting about the master plan, which is that in the information gathering process. You know, the thing that people really said they wanted more of in Princeton were smaller houses on smaller lots, single-family houses. People weren't thrilled about, you know, lots more apartment buildings and stuff like that, which we've ended up doing. You know, under the, um, affordable housing litigation, you know, we've essentially had to do that. But. You know, there was a strong sentiment that people wanted to have more small houses on small lots. And I think that this application. If we can massage it. Uh, really does. Respond to that. Very widespread sentiment that, you know, I heard. As I went to the open houses for the master plan.
Thank you, David, and thank you, Mia, for really, really good perspective from, um, related to those ordinances. Mia, you have more to say?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add one more thing, which is that, you know, um. ADUs, I, one of my concerns is. The use of ADUs because it is a tool that's available. To achieve more smaller houses and more lots in a way that, um. ADUs were not intended. And as someone who was very involved with the ADU ordinance, we really wanted ADUs to be used in what they are. What they were traditionally conceived of as, as a, as an accessory dwelling, not a duplex. Not. A cottage court, not any of those things. ADUs were really supposed to be accessory. And, you know, I think to the point to about the master plan and about, you know, working to try to. Um, create missing middle housing and, you know, to David's point of what, you know, in, in some neighborhoods. Um, working to retain the character of smaller houses and, and possibly on smaller lots. ADUs that, you know, that would involve duplexes, triplexes and, and a, and a, and a more lengthy process along the lines of what. Justin, uh. Described of analyzing the neighborhoods and coming up with through a public process, um, you know, looking at. Zoning changes, um. And, and, and I, I, and I'm not saying, not. Comment saying that this is what this is, but I'm just saying as a cautionary note. It is a concern of mine that there is. I, I perceive a push to, to. Use ADUs as an interim way of jumping ahead. Uh, and getting out ahead of, of where we are, of where the council is in terms of, you know, doing that careful analysis. And ADUs are wonderful for what they are, but let's keep them what they are and not make them. What they, what they were not ever intended to be, which is duplexes, triplexes or any of those things. And I just, as a general comment. For us as a town, I think that's really important to, to do the, you know. Yeah, so I've said enough, that's it.
Thank you. Um, so we have about 10 minutes. I, I really do, there's, um, we're not gonna conclude. Um, everything related to this application tonight, but I would like to. Give the applicant some guidance, um. About, you know, a path forward. Um, and what this board is interested in, um, seeing and what I've heard is. Well, uh. I guess I, I, I want to hear what board members have to say first about the, um. The subdivision, um, of this oversized lot into two slightly undersized lots. And whether, um. Can, wanna get a sense or wanna. Know whether my sense that the board is comfortable with that is correct. Um, if anyone strongly disagrees with that, I'd like for you to. Say so. And then I also want to. Uh, yep, yes, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just want to say. You know. I think we have very regularly. Granted this type of subdivision when a neighborhood has so many. Similar lots. As what is being proposed in this, in this subdivision, it's very hard for me. You know, to say, oh, you know. It's fine for those five lots over there. Cause they existed before zoning, but it's not fine for these to be in the same character as the rest of the neighborhood. Reality is that zoning. Is a very crude. Tool. And in many cases throughout Princeton. Lot sizes were created by zoning, which. Were not right for the neighborhoods in which, on which they were imposed. And I think this is one of those and. You know, I, I have a hard time. Saying why we wouldn't. Permit the subdivision. That's my feeling.
Yep. That is my feeling as well. And I'm not seeing any heads shaking or eyes rolling back in heads or any, any other body language that can lead me to believe. Uh, that there's, um, bad feelings about that. So. Uh, with regard to the second bucket of. The, the second issue of the, um, accessory dwellings and the second bucket of variances proposed, um. What, what I have heard, um, based on board comments is that. The board is not comfortable with. That second bucket of variances, meaning the, um. Upon reflection, the primary dwellings would go in front, um. And, um. I, I think to, to a point that somebody raised, it would be good to see parking also behind the dwellings and not, um. Parking in front of the primary dwelling. And so. I guess I would look to, um. Uh, Mr. Lesko and Mr. Muller, what, what do, what is the right? Sorry, I'm, I'm feeling, um. Pretty aired out at this point, even though I've talked less than I sometimes do. Path forward, what do we want for the, um? If, if I have summarized what, um, what I think is the board sentiment, what is the path? From this point forward, what do we want the applicant to come back with? Um, if we set a date for a follow-up meeting, um. What, what do we want and need for them to provide, uh, 10 days beforehand? Um, and is there a, a, you know. A decision? Well, I, I, we're not at a point where we can. You know, talk through a resolution and, um. Conditions and that kind of thing tonight, so. Mr. Lesko, what's your advice?
Sure, uh, so what I've heard tonight. Discussion of the ADUs, you know, essentially swapping the ADU in the house, uh, houses, um. Potential changes to the driveway, including the parking behind and, and maybe some turning, uh. Or other changes that relate to the trees that. Would not, uh, be viable anymore. That could maybe change the driveway. Um, then the trees themselves are another issue that I think we need to take a look at. You know, just what they can save and will propose to save versus what's just not realistic to even think, um. Would be saved.
So an actual landscape plan?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Uh, my main point, and I could keep going over the. Go further on the details, but I think essentially. We will need to see new documents, uh, a new set of plans based on the. The changes that are being proposed, um, and staff would need time to review them, probably revise memos. Uh, for the board and, and for the public and for the applicant. So I'm certainly not saying, hey, let's put this on next Thursday night. Um, I think we would need a decent amount of time, uh, to get those documents, uh, within whatever reasonable amount of time. The applicant could provide them and then, then have time to write our own memos, you know, maybe a week before that 10-day period.
Go ahead, Jerry, and then Nat Bodenheimer and then, uh, David Cohen. Go ahead, Jerry.
I, I certainly might have misunderstood what, what Mia was saying. I thought she was raising the question of whether we even should. As a. As a condition of granting the subdivision, if that's what we do, whether we should even permit the ADUs or whether they're being misused here. And Mia can certainly jump in.
No, I, I, I wasn't, I, I, I was, I was actually speaking, speaking more generally. I, I, I was speaking more generally, yeah.
And it seems to me there's a separate question of just the level of intensity of development on the site. It was interesting when Mr. The, Mr. Clement. Uh, indicated that, you know, basically constraints prevented him from doing certain things with respect to stormwater management. Well, the constraints were all a function of, of the development. It wasn't environmental constraints. So I, I think that's worth talking about.
Mr. Bodenheimer, Mr. Cohen, and then Claudia Anderson, excuse me.
I, I just, I know that we're, we've, I think we've backed away from any discussion about conditions, but I did, I just wanted to say, I, I, I wouldn't. I'm not comfortable, uh. With imposing conditions that have to do with the screening of visibilities of cars. I, I just. Uh, I just think that's a condition that would be. Excessive, given what you can see walking on any street to Google Street View of viewing. It's a normal thing to see cars. I don't know that. Why it seems to be associated with some kind of. Lower scale development. I mean, there's nothing low scale about the tree trees, you know, tree, street neighborhood and. Cars parked everywhere. You see cars everywhere. It's, it's, it's like.
Well, in this case, the cars was basically in the front yard. You don't see cars in the front yard. You see them on the driveway or on the speed. But, but, but yeah, that's a, maybe a conversation for next.
I'm seeing a naked car. Oh, my God. I mean.
Okay, your point is taken. Mr. Cohen and then Claudia?
Yeah, to, to Jerry's point, I think. Very specifically. I want the applicant to come back with an application that does not use the FAR bonus. They should be using the 25% FAR. I would like to see them. Shooting for a 36%. Impervious coverage as they would have to if these were. Quarter acre lots. And not. Point two-two acre lots. I know that's a big ask. But I think that that's an appropriate ask, um. You know, and I think that they should be looking seriously at maximizing their. Stormwater management. And again, to Jerry's point, if that means reducing the size of. The primary dwelling, you know, that should be in the toolkit for. Uh, meeting these sort of more stringent expectations.
Thank you. Freddie, uh, oh. Claudia Wilson Anderson, did, your hand went down. Did you want to say something?
Um, Mr. Cohen said exactly what I was going to say.
Love that. Uh, Freddie Perlmutter?
Yeah, uh, two things. One, from an environmental standpoint, um, putting up a lot of little trees really does not compensate for taking down. Old, non-diseased trees. And to the extent that you can save the big trees. Um, either by impervious pavement or whatever else, certainly from an environmental standpoint, I think we would like to see do that. Um, Jared, my other question actually is to you, and that is you started off on the Humbert case. If we do this as a subdivision. And then have conditions. Where do we stand with regard to Humbert? And are we getting close to it or does it depend upon how many, I'm not, I'm still unclear as to how Humbert applies to this. If at all to this development.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I thought it was something that was worth considering. I, I frankly think there's a real differentiation between Humbert and what we're doing here. So I really don't think it applies.
Okay.
Thanks, um, it's 11 o'clock. Council President Sacks, you get the last word.
I, I just, thank you. I just want to say, you know. It's, uh, someone mentioned about. This being a family who's trying to remain in Princeton and to, to, to access the equity in their land in order to stay in this community. Rather than throwing up their hands and putting it. Up for sale and having a developer come in and create a McMansion. And so I just, I think we all support that. And, and I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, the more time we, and, and I think. We do need more time, but just be sensitive to the fact that every trip to the planning board costs more money for the applicant. And that is part of the reason why many families do just say, you know, don't. Choose what this applicant is, is doing. And if we could somehow find a way in which. They could continue to remain in the community in which they've raised their children and they work here and live here. And, and I just want to say personally that I appreciate that they are trying to, to, to stay here and, and. And also in, in the process, you know, create more smaller housing. And if there's a way they can do it in, that is, um, you know, more. Environmentally, uh, you know, gets us where we want to go environmentally, um, and, and. Um, is sensitive to some of the, the concerns that the, the immediate neighbors have raised and, um, you know. I, I think that there's a, a path forward here that, that could be, um, a productive one. I, I can't say exactly what that would be, but I, I did want to just end by saying that, you know. Let, let, let's acknowledge that this is something that we would like to see. Possible for, for families like this to, to, to remain and. So. Appreciate that effort.
Certainly agree a hundred percent with what you said, and it's a really good, good way to conclude. Mr. Kennedy, do you have what you need? Can you work with staff on a date curtain?
I, 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 I do, um, though, just one, one quick comment to Council President Sacks' last comment, which, which, um, actually. Rung true with, with the applicant, um, and. You know, the, this would be our, our third planning board meeting and, and ultimately, um, there seemed to be some consensus on just subdividing. And I just would toss out there, uh, I know it is late, but if there was any inclination that, that the board would be, would consider just subdividing and, and, and stepping away from the site plan. Um, uh, in the interest of them, uh, perhaps not bleeding into another meeting and redesigning it, um, they would, that, that would be, uh, uh, of, of interest to them. Uh, absent that, I, I think we do have the guidance about coming back with the flip design, trying to get some more stormwater management and that guidance. But I'll just throw out there kind of as a segue to that. To that last comment, if, if there was an inclination, if we were to kind of forget the rest of the piece of this and, and just, um. Uh, not do. Not do the site plan and, and essentially be stuck not doing ADUs because we did not have the site plan approved, they, they would be. They, they would be amiable to that too, just in the interest of not redesigning the project.
I saw a couple of heads shaking no.
I did too.
I wanna hear what, what Mr. Cohen has to say.
I mean, my head was shaking no, and then I was thinking about it a little bit more. I mean, what I'm concerned about is them coming back with an as-of-right application with 49% impervious coverage. And, you know, none of the benefits that we've been talking about negotiating here. I suppose we could condition the subdivision on saying you have to meet the 36% you know, impervious coverage that you would have to if these were conforming lots. And you can't have the the FAR adjustment. And that would help a little bit, but and I, I am sympathetic, you know, to the point that Mia was making, that you're making, Ryan. So I really don't wanna have a situation where these become two-approved lots and with all the all the problems that we've identified unresolved.
So, and I, I know you weren't making a motion to this effect, but does anyone want to make a motion to approve a subdivision with the conditions? The simple but very important conditions that David just mentioned and not require the applicant to come back?
Can I just ask for some clarification on that proposed route? So if the subdivision was approved with the conditions attached, would the applicant be allowed to sell one of the?